Welcome to the Wednesday, February 20, 2019, Meeting of the Edina City Council. Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Fisher.
Here.
Member Saunton.
Here.
Member Rindell.
Here.
Member Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there any modification by any of the council members or the manager to the meeting agenda as shown? Manager Neal.
Yes, Your Honor. Per the discussion in our work session, I propose we remove item K from the consent agenda tonight and table that to your next council meeting on March 5.
All right. Was there any other reference to that anywhere in the agenda? I thought I saw one other. I guess Ms. Hawkinson is making a presentation, but it's CDBG-related, so...
Yeah, that is going...
Okay. All right. Any other changes from council members? Otherwise, entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda that would eliminate item 5K from that amended agenda. Is there a motion to that effect? So moved.
Second.
Second? We got a motion second on the amended agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor of passing the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. All right. We're going to move on to community comment, and I know there's good turnout here from, I think, the Dublin Circle neighborhood, and welcome, everybody. And I wanted to let you all know that according to our staff and a couple of... We can't have conversations with each other due to the open meeting law, more than one person talking to one another, and you can't have a serial sort of conversation. But I'm getting this from our manager, Neal, and the engineering department, that based on the concerns that some of you have expressed, and I think Rhonda Bland is going to come up and talk in just a moment, but I wanted to let all you know that we're pushing the pause button on this siting of a potential water treatment plant, and we're going to go back to the process that we know and are concerned about making sure that we vet thoroughly in Edina any potential project and the siting of that project. So this is going to go on hold. We're going to regroup, and we're going to step back, and we're going to start over again and start it the way we normally do in Edina, and include everybody in the conversation so that when we get to the end of the day, we make a good decision on where this new water treatment plant ought to be. What's the best location when you consider everything that needs to be considered? Our mission is simple, you know, what's in the common good. But getting to what the answer is, is not always so simple. And when you look at potential impact on neighborhoods, as you look at that common good mission, it can be a little bit delicate at times. So let's take our time. We don't... Nothing's pressing on this issue. We can make a good determination about how to improve the quality of our water and where that water treatment plant ought to be located. So I think Rhonda, I get the dual benefit of meeting Rhonda and then having a great walk with her on Saturday. We... I think we frustrated some of the other folks that were there because we had maybe a half-hour conversations. We walked back and forth in Galleria, but welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And hello and good evening to the council members.
Identify yourself and give us your address, please.
Yes, I will. My name is Rhonda Bland. My husband, Dr. Charles Bland, and I live at 7,000 Carey Road. We've lived in this house since 1979. And the mayor is correct. We had a nice little talk and walk on Saturday, and since that time, the neighborhood has become very concerned about the situation. And I have all of these remarks, but given the statement, I think I'm not going to make those remarks tonight. What I am going to say is thank you. We really, really appreciate the fact that you are sensitive to us, that you're listening, that you're taking us seriously, and you understand our concerns. This is very important. We love our city, and we think you're great, but sometimes everybody needs a little self-correction.
Yeah.
And so perhaps this is that moment. I will say that since the weekend, starting on Monday, we started a petition. We've only had two days, but we have 70 signatures on the petition. And do I give this to the city clerk?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. If you give that to the city clerk, we'll make it part of the record in this matter. And if you want to supplement that petition over time, certainly you should feel free to do so.
This is just the start, because we only had two days to get this together. And I will also say that some people were very enthusiastic, and they were talking within the park with the Prospect Knowles neighborhood. Of course, we had a lot of people speaking about it, but in addition, the discussion went beyond our neighborhood. And a lot of people who live elsewhere in different zip codes, but in Edina, homeowners in Edina, expressed their concern as well. And so there are a few signatures on there, because it was not I who went door-to-door. I gave the documents to other people, and everybody was doing it, but there are a few names on there from other streets in Edina, because a lot of people are very concerned. And I think it's not going to be... end up just being a neighborhood thing. I think this is going to be maybe larger than that.
Sure.
And I think, you know, I can't tell you, because this is all news to me, but the fact that these people are stepping out and wanting to become engaged in something like this, I think this will be something to discuss. And we look forward to discussing it with the council members. And again, we thank you very, very much for allowing this to stop, to take the pause button. In addition, there is a meeting scheduled for February 27, which I'm sure you might be aware of, to discuss the design of the facility. My suggestion is we cancel that meeting. There's no point to it at this point, and if you could notify the appropriate people, that would be a good idea.
Sure. And that's... I'm glad you brought that point up, because when I spoke with the city manager this morning, he was concerned that because we'd set the meeting, some folks in your neighborhood might show up, and if we canceled it, they would be wondering, well, what happened? And so on your end, do you feel like you could communicate well enough with the neighborhood so that we could go ahead and cancel it? Because I see no purpose in having it either.
Well, we agree. We will do our best. Notification came by letter for that, so the same mailing list would be appropriate to cancel the meeting.
All right. Good. All right. Well, we've got a little bit of time here, so if we can get something out promptly, canceling it, we'll do that.
And shall we speak later about further steps and how we should all proceed on this?
I think so. Give us a chance to kind of think about it and think about the process we want to engage in with the broad community. I think about, you know, what are the potential locations for siting S-I-T-I-N-G water plants in the future? You know, we've already talked about the Southdale possibility. We just touched briefly on Dublin Circle, but I think what I hear you saying from other neighborhoods, people are wondering, well, are we next for a water treatment plant? You know? So I think it would be a... There's a good educational element involved in all of it that we've had, but nobody else has had in the broader community. So I think we'd want to figure out a way to engage that broader community in this discussion about making our water as portable as it can be, as clean as it can be, and serving as many people as possible. How do we do that?
We are all in favor of good water.
Yeah.
That we all agree to. So anyways, thank you very much again. We really appreciate this, and we look forward to engagement and discussion.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for being... Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? Ms. Castellano, come on up.
Roberta Castellano, 4854 France Avenue South. Mayor and city council. The Edina Comprehensive Plan, Small Area Plan, abbreviated SAP, has been presented to the public as for 50th and France, but the planning has actually been including perimeter homes within the White Oaks neighborhood. Notably, 49th Street resident Brian Lambert and his family found their home demolished in a map on display at the October 23, 2018 SAP Community Meeting Number Three. Brian has been unable to obtain a guarantee that his home will not be subjected to eminent domain, and yet he is still not even within the planned boundaries. However, in their book, Eminent Domain Abuse Survival Guide, the Castle Coalition advises that such pledges are not enough, and warns that, quote, "For condemnation, the only protection is to make sure the agency does not have the power to condemn, and that means making sure you are not in the redevelopment area," close quote. In the map shown to date, it is obvious to me that the city intends to encircle Brian's and other homes prior to approving the SAP. After neighbors were chided for exceeding their allotted 15 minutes at a Monday night, February 4 SAP workgroup meeting called ostensibly on our behalf, apparently in response to our calls for inclusion, the next day, Brian sent an email to neighbors, city council, planning staff, and workgroup co-chairs, acknowledging the obvious and understood motivation for maintaining the district, but also the dilemma that our neighborhood is facing. Brian wrote, quote, "I would however suggest that in the future, the selection process for these small business area groups take more care than seems apparent here to include residents with a clear and specific interest in the unintended consequences slash collateral damage to the surrounding neighborhoods," close quote. In reply, Planning Commissioner and 50th and France SAP Workgroup Co-Chair Ian Nemirov was unapologetic. Several statements were aggressive in posture, I felt. I will read just two quotes. One, quote, "The conversation last night did not go as well as the one Edie and I had with several of your neighbors last week, but maybe if I made queso, it would have gone better," close quote. Two, quote, "Instead of inferring bias or slant or lack of consideration on our part, I encourage you to think that we may just be doing what we think is the best job we can in a manner that is as fair and balanced as we can be, even if one or more of our decisions do not align with any particular result that is desired by a member or group in the community," close quote. I submit to council that the concerns of Brian and our neighborhood are not due to hungry stomachs or mere desires, and that several of Ian's statements constitute evidence of the very problem that Ian seemed to want to dispel. Brian has been put to the test, especially in the face of possible eminent domain. It is my opinion that these and other statements do not meet the expectations of Planning Commission bylaws, and I ask for the council's review of this matter and that you will take action as deemed appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castellano. I... Well, let's complete this portion of the agenda first, and we can come back to that matter. Thank you. We'll make that part of the Small Area Plans study record. Anyone else with another issue of concern to them that want to address the council on? That's not on the agenda this evening? Okay. Let's close that portion of the agenda, but let's address this Small Area Plan Study Group that's working at 50th and France. As I recall, about half of the group are residents of the neighborhood. Manager Neal, I don't know... Or I don't know, Mr. Nundorff's in the back. Yeah, folks, feel free to... If you want to get up, and this is a good time. If you feel like you don't want to interrupt, this is a good time to be exiting.
Mr. Teague could address the composition...
Yeah. Where is Mr. Teague?
He's right here.
Well, here he is. All right. Do you want to give us a present update on the status of the 50th and France Small Area Plan work and the notion that surfaced early on about a potential walkway between Townes Road and 50th and France area?
Yes. So there were some early illustrations that did have potential pedestrian connections into the neighborhood. The current draft that the workgroup is working on along with our consultant has removed all of those, so there's no intention of the workgroup of condemning folks' homes or even providing a pedestrian connection shown in the Small Area Plan. But I don't have the date in front of me of exactly when we're going to have that draft completed, to be posted and made public, but it is coming very soon.
All right. Good. All right. Thanks, Director Teague. We've got some students in the audience this evening as well, I've noticed, and maybe parents, maybe teachers with them. I see an adult that doesn't look like he's in the ninth grade back there. So where are some of the students? You want to all stand up, the students in the room, and tell us what grade you're in and whose class you're in?
I'm Fiona. I'm in ninth grade, and I'm in Mr. Jensen's class.
Okay.
Or Jensen's.
All right. Good. And you're all in the same class?
No.
Different classes?
This is the ice class.
What other classes are represented here? What other teachers' classes?
Mr. Doctor.
Ms. Deere.
All right. Good. Same thing over there? Mr. Doctor?
Mr. Stigman.
Okay. Good. All right. Well, welcome, and nice to have you here. Thanks. And we got you standing up, so we got a record now of who's here. So anybody says, I don't know if they were there or not, well, they'll see you on TV. All right. And next, we have the city managers' response to community comments that occurred at our last meeting, so I'm going to turn it over to Manager Neal for his comments on past community concerns.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had five speakers at community comment at our previous meeting. First speaker was John Carlson, and Mr. Carlson asked the council to consider the speaking rules for community comment in that the rules sometimes prohibit residents from being able to comment on legitimate items because of the way we have our rules structured, where we say that we invite residents to share new issues or concerns that haven't been considered in the past 30 days by this council or which aren't slated for future consideration. If you take those two parameters, they sometimes exclude items that are bona fide public interest items, and they don't have a chance to comment on them. So he asked us to take a look at our rules to make sure that they seem fair, and we're taking a look at some of our peer cities to see how they handle that matter. We'll bring those findings back to the council at an upcoming work session, so you have a chance to consider them.
Okay. Good.
Mr. Gubrud, Bob Gubrud spoke about the IAP2 spectrum that the city is beginning to use as a guide for public engagement, and he presented an understanding to you that this spectrum was like a spectrum where you start on one end and work your way to the other end, and then you're done, much like a Kubler-Ross Five Stages of Grief, where you start at stage one and you end at stage five. That, of course, is not how the spectrum is designed, and the graphic looks similar to that, but the graphic is not... But the graphic doesn't explain well how the spectrum itself works. It's more vertical, right? So the council is picking a style of engagement, and then the tools for that engagement are shown in a kind of a vertical sense. So our public engagement coordinator, M.J. Liman, met with Mr. Gubrud personally to talk about that, and they had a good meeting, and she's happy to talk to anyone who's interested in that spectrum and how it works.
I think in fairness, Mr. Gubrud, when I... I think he saw an article in About Town...
Yes.
...that had a portion of the spectrum in it. Didn't have the whole grid system in place.
Right.
And I think if he would have seen the whole grid system, he would have understood...
A better look at that spectrum is...
Yeah, would have been... Provided a better understanding for him.
Yeah, their website is a much better graphic showing that spectrum.
Okay.
Roberta Castellano pointed out that a February 6 Planning Commission meeting was not included on the city's master public meeting calendar on our website. It was not. It was on the planning department's public meeting calendar, but human error didn't connect that to our master calendar. We've had some discussion about that with all of our administrative staff to make sure that we do a better job of connecting those two things in the future. Tim Duffy spoke to you about concerns around the proposal to build Water Treatment Plant Five at the Dublin Reservoir Site. He was concerned that there was a lack of public engagement at the time that he was first hearing about that issue. And finally, Mr. Frank Lorenz discussed Emerald Ashbore and asked whether we knew if it had gotten cold enough during the recent polar vortex to kill any of the EAB in our ash trees in Edina. We don't know the answer to that. We hope so, and it's a possibility that it has, but we won't know that until the spring, and we are going to keep... We are going to monitor that in the spring, as are a lot of other cities with EAB infestations.
Good.
Thank you.
Did that recitation of prior matters on community comment cause council members to want to inquire of Manager Neal about anything? Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. We have a consent agenda in front of us with several items on it. We did remove 5K for future consideration. Is there anyone on the council who wishes to remove any other item from the consent agenda for a broader discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consent agenda with the exclusion of 5K.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second to adopt the consent agenda items with the exception of 5A... Or 5K, I mean. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Next portion of our agenda, a regular portion on the agenda, is special recognitions and presentations. We don't have any tonight. We're going to move on to public hearing matters. We have two public hearing matters, and the first one, Stephanie Hawkinson, our Affordable Housing Director, has this matter. It involves money coming down from the federal government through Hennepin County to Edina as part of the Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program Fund process. And Ms. Hawkinson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you indicated, I am here with our annual request for approval of the Edina's allocation of block grant funds. As you may recall, the Community Development Block Grant is a federally funded program administered by HUD, and Hennepin County distributes the funds to the various communities. The money must be allocated towards improving housing opportunities and providing a suitable living environment for households with low and moderate incomes. The projects funded through block grant money must be directed towards public service or community development projects. Last year, our allocation was greater than the previous year, and again, it's estimated to be greater than it was last year. So this is proposed. We're not going to know the final amount until HUD has their final budget. So we expect it this spring with a contract in July or so. Last year, it was delayed. It's possible that it'll get delayed again this year. But the resolution allows for redistribution if the amount increases. So there's some language in there that will allow for a slight change in that. So our proposed budget for this year is $151,000, up from $135,000 to $100,000 last year. So of our allocation, 15% or $22,650 must go for public services. These funds are not on the table tonight. These... The Hennepin County now has all this money and distributes it directly through a master RFP through... with agencies, and representatives, staff from a variety of nine cities go and review the RFP and make the determination of what projects get funded. So of our allocation, $22,650 stays with the county.
Look at my agenda. My version of it is right.
The remainder, the 85%, or $128,350, that is what I'm asking for approval tonight. And these have to be for community development projects. Similar to previous years, I'm proposing that $93,350 be allocated towards Homes Within Reach, a program of the West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, and $35,000 go towards residential rehab. I think you're all familiar with WALT and Homes Within Reach, but for... To remind you, it has been operating in Edina since 2007. This program provides affordable homeownership opportunities using the community land trust model for income-eligible home buyers. Within the time since 2007, 13 houses have been acquired through the land trust model in Edina. These houses will remain affordable for 99 years. WALT pairs the city allocation of block grant funds with money raised through other public entities and foundations. So the $93,000, we anticipate there'd be... That would be one additional home in Edina that they could put in land trust, but they're going to need other money, and $93,000 is not enough to put a house in Edina into the land trust model. As you can see from this chart, Edina compared to our neighbors, our housing prices are significantly higher. So that is why, even though we provide money to WALT each year, we only get about one house a year with our allocation, just because of the nature of our housing prices. But again, those homes are affordable for 99 years, and there are 13 of them right now.
And Ms. Hawkinson, do you know if Homes Within Reach is holding any money that we've passed through to them in the past from CDBG?
Yes.
In order to aggregate enough money to purchase another home that will be affordable for housing purposes?
Mayor, council members, yes. Last year, we awarded them enough funding for about one and a half homes. So they... We closed on a home this fall using some of that funds, but there is some residual.
All right. So if we approve this tonight, this will add to the residual amount they have and...
Correct.
At some point in the future, we'll get to the point where they can purchase another property and fix it up and resell it.
Mayor, council members, that is correct, and they will pair this money with funds that they get independently from Hennepin County, from foundations, and from the state. So they collect money from a variety of sources and put it together in order to get a large enough amount to be able to acquire a home. But they also work in other communities, so the money that Edina allocates towards WALT, that money stays in Edina. They don't lend the money that's coming from the different communities, so none of our money will go towards Eden Prairie or Minnetonka. It will stay in Edina.
Sure.
But yes.
Yeah. Our money gets fire-walled off...
Yes.
...to protect it, so that we can aggregate enough money there for them to be able to buy a house. And I think for the students in the audience, Ms. Hawkinson, it might be good to explain to them how this program works. So if they're paying $450,000 for a house, what's the price that they sell it for after they fix it up and make it marketable to their standards? How does that work? I think students would be interested in that.
WALT acquires the land beneath a house, so they separate the value of the house from the value of the land. And so the house, when a person buys a home or a household... A family buys a home that's not in a land trust, you buy the house and the land together. In a land trust home, they're separated, and the organization continues holding title to the land, and the homeowner holds title to the house, and then they rent the land for... In a land lease for 99 years. So they're able to separate out the cost of the home from the cost of the land. So the cost of the home could be, if something's on the market for $450,000, the cost of the land could be $200,000, and the cost of the house is $250,000. So a lower-income household could buy the home for $250,000. So it makes it much more affordable to be able to reach lower-income households. So in order to be partake in this program, you have to be income-eligible. You have to qualify as a lower or moderate-income household.
All right.
So this program is not available for people who are over income.
All right. Thank you.
You still need to maintain your yard. You still need to shovel and mow your lawn and water your garden. They don't take care of your land, but you don't own it.
All right.
And then when you... They sell the home, they only get a portion of the equity of the home. They only get 35%. So the home becomes increasingly affordable over time, because they can't sell it for what the market value is. So this year, unlike last year, we are... In the past, we've also put money into the rehabilitation of private property. Last year, we did not, because we had excess funds. Something happened in 2018, and there are a lot more applications for this funding source. So there is enough money remaining in this pool that sits at Hennepin County for four rehab projects to occur. There is one on the waiting list. Of the four households, two were seniors, owned houses, and one had a sagging, collapsed sewer line. So it's a pretty dramatic need for fixing up their home, but they were, again, income-eligible, and they did not have the resources on their own to go and get a home equity loan to be able to do these repairs. So we're... We want to... There's only $3,000, a little bit more than that, remaining in that fund, so we want to put some more money into it, because there seems that there's still a need in the city to have that fund available. So with consultation with county staff, we're looking to put $35,000 into that account. So to summarize, of the 151 that we estimate will be allocated from HUD, $26,650 will be for public services, and those funds will be distributed by the county based on staff input. input. Tonight, we're looking for how to allocate the remaining 128,350. I'm proposing that 93,350 goes to WALT, and 35,000 goes to the rehabilitation of private property. And that will be administered by the county. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Hawkinson? Member Brindle?
Thank you. In the past, there have been other applicants for these dollars, like VEEP, like Senior Community Services. Were there not other applicants for these, for these funds?
Mayor, Councilmember Brindle, those come out of that 15% allocation. It used to be that the city would make decisions on that source of funding now. And so VEEP and Senior Community Services would have to go to each city and apply separately. Now there's one RFP that's through the county, and that's part of that 15%. And so they will, they still do apply to the county, but instead of having to go to individual cities.
Okay.
And so it's just our portion. And then city staff from the nine cities get together, and we review all those proposals together.
Okay. So this is separate from that?
This is separate from that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Hawkinson at this point in time, on these recommendations? How about with respect to the rehabilitation of private property? You suggested $35,000 for an allocation into that program. Any sense of how many households we were able to help out last year with the CDBG allocation into that, into that category?
Mayor, council members, last year, we assisted four households, and one is currently on the waiting list. This was an unusual year. And last year also, we pulled money away from that account due to many years of inactivity. And so it hadn't been tapped into for a long time. And so HUD funds need to have a spend-down timeline, or else they're lost. They get returned to the federal government. So we, instead of losing those funds, we transferred some out of that program to put into WALT. Then, right after doing that, all of a sudden, there are four applications for that. So it has been a very quiet program. Neither the county nor staff are comfortable with there not being any money available in that, so that's why it's fairly nominal.
Is it, is it money that we, we handle on a grant basis with people? Or is it, is it a loan to people to be able to fix up their property?
Mayor, council members, it is a deferred loan that is due upon sale or refinance of their home. So it gets paid back. And so there is program income that comes off of it.
All right. Good. Thank you. That prompt any further questions by council members? All right. This is a public hearing matter. Is anyone in the audience that wishes to speak regarding this recommendation from our staff with regard to the allocation, proposed allocation of the CDBG funds? All right. Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried? Do we have a, a motion regarding Resolution 2019-13, which would approve the proposed application and allocation of 2019 Urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant monies as recommended by staff?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion and second on Resolution 2019-13. Any further discussion?
I just thought of another question.
Sure. Member Brindle?
Since we, we remitted funds last year, are these funds going to be remitted this year or every two years? We were in a every year, two-year practice. Are we still in that, or are we in an every, every year?
Mayor, Councilmember Brindle, I believe we're in an every-year approval process.
So we've, so the process has changed beginning this year? Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. We've got a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the, of the passage of the resolution designated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried? And we have one more public hearing matter, and Director Teague has this matter, is with respect to the proposed revision of PUD, what we call PUD 17, which is for Pentagon Park South.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This request before you was...
Is an amendment.
The zoning ordinance amendment.
It's an amendment to a PUD that was approved by the council this past summer. It's the Pentagon, Pentagon Village Project, the South Pentagon Parcel. So the plan that you see on the left was the plan that was approved this past summer. The applicant is proposing some revisions that staff would characterize as really improvements to what was previously, previously approved. Essentially, the same project. So on the left here, there's two retail buildings. Those would remain the same with the new proposal. In the middle, there was a four-story hotel, 193 units. The applicant is proposing now a five-story hotel that would have 235 units, so an increase by one story in units. This building that was on the corner here of 77th and Computer was initially earmarked as Phase Two. They'd like to build that in Phase One. Probably the most significant change is going from two parking decks, as shown here on the left, to just one. The South Hotel was to sit on top of that parking deck. With, so again, with the proposed plan, there would just be the one parking deck, and you can see the increase in green space as a result of the one deck. So again, those three basic changes to the previously-approved plan. So I'll just quickly move through the previous approved plans. This would be a final build-out. This was the South Hotel. You can see with the parking ramp that was previously-approved underneath. This is from 77th. This is that now Phase One office retail building. So a look of the previous approval and what's proposed this evening. So this is the proposed now five-story hotel, and the applicant will go through a little more detail in regard to the building materials for that structure. But again, this is five stories now as opposed to four. This is the South Hotel that once sat on top of the parking ramp. This is the Water Walk, the more extended Stay Hotel. You can see the added green space. This is the corner into, into the hotel. You can see again the added green space on the corner. Again, renderings of the building. So this was the freestanding parking ramp that, and this, the parking ramp that's now proposed, there's enough parking stalls in that ramp to serve the entire site. With that previous approval, this past summer, there were some parking variances that went with that approval. With this proposal tonight, the applicant is providing enough parking to, to support all of the uses without a variance. And again, the retail buildings. So the request before you is a revision to the zoning ordinance to make those, to reflect those changes of the originally-approved PUD and site plan approval for Phase One. So just a quick review of the site plan. Again, really, nothing changed in terms of building location. Just that added green space is the most significant change. You may recall, there were some roadway improvements that were required, just given the magnitude of the, of the development. And so the, the result is, within this area, maybe this plan will show it a little better. You can see there was green space along 77th and Computer. With the new plan, there's a turn lane added here. So the applicant removed the green space just within this area here. When this was reviewed by the Planning Commission, they're recommending a condition that the building or the site plan be adjusted to provide that boulevard, that boulevard-style sidewalk. The applicant you'll hear from this evening would like to build it as proposed, so they'll be asking the council to remove that condition. But again, that was recommended by the, by the Planning Commission. So the site circulation all remains the same. Access off of Computer, access to the parking ramp is off of Viking Drive, the main entrance off of 77th. We did have WSB take a look at, you know, the traffic study that was done. There's no changes to the, you know, the square footage of the project is essentially the same. They did highlight for Phase Two, when the office, the office building would be proposed on this site, and then potentially on top of the parking ramp, they did identify a shortage of parking. So rather than get into the details of that, it's all speculative at this point, that we would need to examine the parking as part of that Phase Two. They would need to come back and revise the PUD, just as we're going through the same process here this evening. But again, the site is code-compliant with the previous ordinance on the site. No variances requested. So the primary issue are the proposed changes reasonable to justify the amendment? Both staff and the Planning Commission believe that it is. We believe it is an improved site plan, eliminating one of the parking structures, an increase of almost 20,000 square feet of green space to the previously-approved plan. Again, the site is code-compliant, does provide enough parking, and WSB conducted that reexamination of the traffic and didn't identify any additional issues. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval of the zoning ordinance amendment that would approve final site plan for Phase One. And with that, I can stand for any questions you may have.
Questions for Director Teague? Member Brindle?
Thank you. So there's a document provided to us in our packet from Dorsey Whitney, and it references the easement on the parking part of the property. And so that leads me to ask how much, I can't remember. I know we talked about public parking and how much of that ramp, the parking structure would be available for public parking?
Yeah, I believe that's in the, in the TIF document that you're going to be considering later this evening. But it was my understanding that they were going to make the, the property available for users of the park, potentially. I don't know the specifics of that, but...
Okay.
The way staff reviewed this for the zoning, they're providing enough parking to meet the needs of all of the uses proposed here in Phase One. You recall, there was a variance as part of that, the first original approval. So they may not need all of those parking stalls.
Right.
So there may be some available to, for use of the trail to the north.
Okay. All right. And facilities for bike parking? Has anybody talked about that?
Yeah, well, that's a standard code requirement. They need to provide bike racks for, I believe it's, one for every 20 parking stalls. So they would need to provide that within the development. Again, that would, and they are suggesting that they would satisfy that condition. That's a detail that's examined, examined at the time of a building permit to ensure that they're code-compliant.
Sure. Okay. Thanks.
Good. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, Director Teague. On the Phase Two, the proposed expansion, you were on the right page there. But that's shown as green space. There's some plantings around here. I don't think those exist at this time. And I'm just kind of wondering, is, is there an interim plan? Phase Two is somewhat down the road, I'm certain. So is there an interim plan for the use of that space?
Not that I am aware of whether they're going to program that. It would be privately-held property. But they will be required to seed and landscape as shown on the screen here. I believe it's on the screen.
Okay.
And they would also install that sidewalk as part of Phase One.
They will do that?
They would.
Thank you.
Member Fisher?
So Carrie, you didn't, hasn't, this really hasn't been talked about much, but Councilmember Anderson actually, I think, was referring to it. It's, in the, in the original scheme, there was a street going through, all the way through on the north side of the parking ramp. And so the street went between the office development, the future office development, and the parking to the southeast. And yeah, that side-by-side comparison shows it pretty well. And one of the things that I've always liked about the project is that not everybody has to come in the main entrance, you know, on the north side of the site between the two restaurants. So you're not forcing all the funneling of traffic there. I'm a little concerned that now essentially, we've ta, so what I, what I liked is the ability to take the frontage road. Some of the traffic could really stay out of the, never have to really come in into the city that way. They're staying on the frontage road, funneling in. I'm kind of okay, because Viking Drive can become the funnel for the parking. You know, there's two entrances of the parking off of Viking, assuming, you know, we can't really see Viking. So I'm assuming that the median on Viking is going to be cut appropriately, so you can actually, you know, get over and get into the parking. So I'm just going out of hope there. And, and I just, have you had any discussions with the developer? What's the, have they looked at the traffic flow? How does it change? Because there is still, what I would understand to be an entrance on the north side of that parking.
I believe Director Milner would like to address that.
We had the same concerns, Councilmember Fisher. That's why we had WSB look at, look at this new plan and talk about the traffic operations at the intersection of 77th on the north side. But we also told the applicant, you can show it this way, but we may still require it with Phase Two, depending on what you do in Phase Two. You know, if that, if that building is big enough, we may say you still need that street there. So by leaving it a green space, leave it as an option for the future, we could require it with that Phase Two that we're talking about.
So, okay. That makes sense. Is that part of why there's an additional turn lane on the northeast? That we, were you talking about where we lost a little boulevard?
That was required with either, either one of these plans.
Okay.
Turn lane was there, and it, we just, you know, when they have the concepts, they don't know how much space we're going to need when we start looking at those improvements.
All right. And then, Carrie, you talked about that the parking no longer requires a variance. And I'm, I'm trying to wrap my brain around this, because we used to have two parking ramps. Now we have one parking ramp. And so there's more parking spaces in the one ramp? And then, then later, you talked about if we build the office, which I hope we do. I mean, that's, to me, that's what's going to make this development really work, is that there's going to be really nice office space in a prime location in our city. So I expect, I want to see that office even more than they were showing before. Is this parking going to be able to satisfy the needs for the office that we want someday?
Yeah, that's the hope. So that the variance looked at both phases, and it was short parked in that second phase as well. So we actually granted the variance as part of the second phase. WSB didn't believe that what they were showing in the second phase, there was enough parking to even, it was so short parked, they weren't comfortable with doing a variance for what they were proposing. So the thought was, well, we'll need to take a closer look at that once you're ready to truly build the office, where we look at, maybe they have to add another, another deck to that existing parking ramp.
And I guess that would, that's the reason for my question, is the time to plan for that is now, to make sure the structure could handle it. It's like proof of parking to the max, right? You have to add another deck at some point. At the same time I say that, I'm hoping that as we move into the future, we're going to need less parking, not more. And, you know, so I just want to make sure that we've, we've kind of accounted for the, for the possibilities in the future.
Yeah, and that's why we wanted to give them the heads-up at this point, that we do have some concerns about that second phase. So they should plan for potentially adding another level with the construction of that. And I believe the applicant can, can speak to that in more detail.
I mean, I just, you know, to be clear, I, I think this is heading in the right direction. I, I love the fact that we don't have two parking ramps, you know, aligning an entire street that people are trying to walk along. And, you know, it's a much better solution. But I just want to make sure that we're accounting for those things at the same time. And I do have a couple of questions on just the overall design of buildings. Is this an okay time?
Sure. If you, yes. Unless you want to direct them to the applicant and...
Yeah, the architect is going to go through the buildings and...
Then I'll, I'll wait on that. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, if my recollection serves me correctly, when we talked about authorizing the staff to go forward with... to go forward with a redevelopment plan, an amended redevelopment plan, we talked about the fact that an element of that would have to be the footings and the pilings that would be necessary to further expand this parking ramp in the future if it was so required. And I think that those requirements might be in the redevelopment agreement that we're going to see, but somebody can talk about that, certainly the applicant and...
Right.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right. Thanks, Director Teague. And who's here on behalf of the applicant this evening?
Jay Scott and Bill Witrock will make the presentation for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Scott.
Good evening. My name's Jay Scott with Almond Real Estate Group. Pleasure to be back here before you tonight and talk a little bit about some of the changes to the plan. I wanted to go through those real quickly. Mr. Teague highlighted most of those, there were just a couple of other ones that I thought might be helpful to see as well. They're rather small, but let me see if I can... So if you look at this particular plan here, we have the, really the, the changes identified for you that we've made from the prior plan that was approved. So we did consolidate the parking ramp, as we've talked about here before. We did address snow removal associated with the ramp, which is identified as 2B on that. So we've got a collection area, we've got a, a snow removal plan in place to be able to handle that. Certainly, the Water Walk Hotel in the corner of the site there, changes associated with that you're familiar with now with the additional green space, the trail system passing through there, et cetera, kind of making that more of a pedestrian friendly corner versus where we were before. That particular hotel is the same size as before, so still four stories, 153 rooms. The other hotel, the dual branded hotel, Marriott Dual Branded Hotel, which is identified as number four on that graphic, has grown one floor, so that's gone from four to five stories, from 193 rooms to 235 rooms. So it's a little bit of an expansion there. By and large, the rest of the plan stays pretty much the same. As Mr. Teague pointed out, through some of the improvements to the infrastructure required for this project, we did lose the center aisle coming into the project, which was disappointing from our perspective, but we certainly understand with traffic volumes and so forth, and trying to have safe turning movements at that intersection that was required. So that was a change from the prior plan. And then the other point I wanted to talk a little bit about, and Council Member Fisher, you, you brought this up, and I'll talk about the parking here in a minute as well, was the area that we closed off on that particular plan. So really, why we did that really is twofold, and primarily the, the main reason was, we're really trying to protect that plaza. So right now, what we want to do is, we want to make it an inviting area for people to meander to, to be able to participate with the activities that are going to occur at that plaza. We felt if we had a street coming right through in that particular area, that was really going to detract from the quality of what that plaza might otherwise be. So really, the plan was to remove the road because we didn't feel we needed access there. We have plenty of access coming throughout the site in three different points, two different points coming into the garage off of Viking and certainly off of West Seventy-seventh and Computer. And in fact, even the design of the center and the, and the project coming in off of West Seventy-seventh is intended to really slow down the traffic. We don't want that to be the principal or primary path of access either. So that really is going to be for people coming to the retail, some of the service coming to the plaza. We really think most of the commuters and some of the work traffic and hotel people are going to be coming in and looping around the site, coming in off of Computer, or coming directly into the garage off of Viking. So we would expect most of the traffic to take that path, which will free up the rest of the site to be just a more inviting environment, if you will, for everybody that's going to participate and be part of that. The second reason that we considered potentially closing that off was really to make a connection between the future office building and the parking ramp. There's gonna, there likely would be some type of physical connection between those two components to provide covered walkway, protected walkway, to make that a more enticing location, if you will, for employers to want to be, right? So they want their customers, or they want their employees rather, to be able to walk in a covered environment, an enclosed environment, whatever that might be. And there's a conflict if there's a road coming through there, or certainly there's an economic conflict potentially in trying to figure out, how do we get car traffic through there, vehicle traffic through there, and get pedestrian traffic above that particular area? So that's a secondary consideration, and it will be more fully addressed when we come back in the future with that office plan. So we are looking at different designs for that as well. But I wanted to mention those two particular issues as to why right now we're showing it the way we are in the plan, just so that you have that background information. I'm going to just go through the phasing here, and then I'm going to talk about the parking real briefly here. So as Mr. Teague pointed out, everything on this particular graphic is what we would propose to build, build in Phase One. So we did add the building at the corner of Computer and West Seventy-seventh to this. Previously, that was not part of Phase One, that was going to be a future phase. We are moving that portion of the project up and including that now in Phase One. And this is a graphic...
Could you go back to that, could you go back to that overhead for a moment, Mr. Scott? And I thought you raised an interesting point. It was something that, that I thought was a loss as well, and that was the, sort of the parkway entrance with the green material down the middle, so that we had a boulevard entrance. No way to push the Restaurant One and Restaurant Two further west and further east and, and have that same sort of entrance effect where you're getting a dose of greenery right off the bat, right in the boulevard?
Yeah, it would, it certainly would be desirable even from our standpoint visually. It would have an impact certainly on those buildings, we just don't have the room on the site to maintain the size of those buildings. At some point, that building on the east side, the smaller of the two retail buildings, becomes not very viable economically because it's just so small, it's very expensive to build, and there's not a lot of space to house within it at that point. So I think we're kind of challenged a little bit, you know, when you look at trying to maintain adequate parking, trying to maintain adequate trail system through there. You've got the improvements that are being required along West Seventy-seventh, which are wonderful improvements, but all of that sort of pinches our buildings, and we really just simply ran out of space in order to be able to accommodate that.
Okay. Thanks for that response. Go ahead.
All right. So this is just a visual graphic showing what, and Mr. Witrock will talk a little bit here in a minute about the parking garage. We're going to go through that a little bit for you and talk about the architecture associated with that as well. But this, this graphic represents what Phase One would look like with the parking ramp partially built. Phase Two then would include the office building. So the office building is very much a part of this plan. We're having some good activity right now in the marketplace for that. So the timing, while somewhat uncertain, we're hopeful that we can pick that piece up and, and have it come right on the heels of this Phase One component and just have a, kind of a continuous construction cycle, if you will. We do have the expansion of the parking ramp tied to that office building. And as Mr. Teague pointed out through the analysis that's been done to date, actually, we're very close, I believe, Mr. Teague, in parking for Phase Two. We were just a few stalls short to meet that particular piece. The question came, if we added a building element on top of the parking ramp, how would we be able to park that? And, and that really comes down to an issue of shared parking. So we've done our own internal analysis, and we feel very comfortable with the shared parking components going on between the office and the hotels, that we do have adequate parking. And that's going to be something that has to prove out, certainly as we go forward here, and we talk about that second office building and the possibility of a third office building, you know, that, that we understand is going to have to be proved out. However, along those lines, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned this before, we are making arrangements right now to build in the foundation, the piling systems, if you will, to support the expansion of the parking garage. That will be part of our permit for the parking garage upfront day number one. In fact, we've even added a seventh level. So previously, we had six levels, which are shown on this diagram, and we've sort of beefed up that foundation to even allow for an additional level, a seventh level, if you will, now, just for that very reason, so we made sure we would have adequate parking going forward. So those plans are, are being prepared right now, and assuming this project gets approved, they would be submitted to the building officials for permitting, and we would hope to start the garage sometime in March. So that's, that would come right on the heels of tonight's meeting. And then the third phase, well, that shows you what it would look like with the office building and the full garage built out only to six levels here, so we didn't change that graphic here to represent the seventh level, but it shows the six levels of the ramp there in the middle. And then the third final phase would be the building element on top of the parking ramp itself. And again, it's going to be market-driven, much like the first office building's going to be, and it could potentially be a different product type, could be a hotel, could be residential. We're showing it as office today, we're marketing it as office today, but if the office market wasn't there, we have the opportunity to do something with that in order to create the density and to take advantage of that space, if you will. And then obviously, we would be adding on to the parking ramp to make sure that's supported as well. So then that shows potentially what that would look like. Again, the footprint is not designed at this point, that's a concept drawing, but it shows an example of how that might look and how it might operate with that parking ramp.
Would you go back a slide? And, and do you want to comment now on that, that right-hand turn lane off of Seventy-seventh on the Computer Avenue and the, and your, your concerns about condition number 15 and the resolution, which was the Planning Commission recommendation that you have boulevard-style sidewalk on that side, or maintain that boulevard-style sidewalk?
Yeah, I, I very much would like to do that, and I certainly appreciate the comments that the Planning Commission had. And to their defense, they have not seen this plan for probably a year or so. You've since seen the plan and approved the plan, and we've been operating with that approved plan by and large. Now, there were some changes made, as was, was alluded before, with respect to the expansion of sort of the turn lanes that are occurring there, that really pinched our building. And so we really don't have adequate room there. I did ask Dan Parks with Westwood to join me at the meeting tonight, maybe just to talk very briefly about the impacts of those changes, and, and just so that you were aware of that, so you could consider that as part of the decision tonight. And then the other component, the other condition that was mentioned was really the eight-foot sidewalks coming through the site, both north and south and east and west. As you can see from this graphic, and this doesn't highlight all of the internal sidewalks, we have plenty of sidewalks moving throughout the site, north, south, east, west. I think the comment was, we wanted to see something that was more of an eight-foot wide sidewalk. The ones highlighted in green here are six-foot wide, the ones in orange are eight-foot wide. We do have a pinch point there as well, in front of the parking garage in particular, that would cause some real challenges for us. So if, if you will, I'm just going to ask Mr. Parks just to speak briefly about that, and then if you have any questions further on that, we can talk about that.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor and the members of the council, Dan Parks, a professional engineer with Westwood, professional services, and we've been working on this project for quite some time, so we're glad to be at this point with you. The, when the project was originally approved, there was a green space, and I don't, can't really point to that, but at the northeast corner, there was green space at that corner surrounding the sidewalk. But due to the city staff review and the final engineering from WSB, there was a discussion about putting, putting a southbound turn lane on Seventy-seventh and then also widening Computer Lane to provide that leftbound turn, or that, that westbound turn lane. So what happened then is the road got wider, and it, and then the sidewalk was, was shown on this plan as being right behind the, the curb. So what this plan will show you, actually in gray, there is an area back there that's going to be green, and what happens is, at the pinch points with the building, there's an eight-foot sidewalk and there's a six-foot green space at minimum. You can see kind of at the apex of the building, where those two trees are shown, it will be wider than six feet. So we've got 14 feet to really work with in that location. So behind the, behind the curb, 14 feet to the building at, at the pinch points. So what this plan shows is having an eight-foot sidewalk next to the street, and then a minimum of a green spa, a green space of six feet between the sidewalk and the building. And the reason I like that, that, that in this location is because these buildings are going to be three to four feet, the finished floors can be three to four feet above the road. And the reason that is, is because this area is in an area that's, that's prone to flood. So the buildings have to be at a minimum elevation, two feet above the flood level, whereas the roads are going to be where the roads are going to be. So in case of a, a large storm event, the water might be in the roads, but our building's going to be a couple of feet above it. So the reason we have this design is, I felt it was a better design to have the road with some green space coming down to the sidewalk, rather than having the sidewalk right next of the building, and then having a three-foot, three-to-four-foot disjointed face of the building at, at that location. Again, this is really the only location at the turn lane, and as the road sweeps south on Computer Avenue, around the rest of the site, we've got a fairly good green boulevard. But this location was a little bit different to address, and I think this is a, I think is a safe design, I think is a good design with the elevations on the site, and that's kind of how we got to the point today.
Okay. So you, you can have an eight-foot sidewalk on that northeast corner of the rendering, but it's got to be a back, a behind-the-bulkhead sidewalk as opposed to a boulevard-style sidewalk because of the...
Exactly, exactly.
...constraints of the rest of the site? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, exactly. And if there's no other questions on that one, I can briefly talk about the, the sidewalk on the north side of the ramp.
All right. Mr. Parks, that, it's also, it's possible that the cursor may work with the, with the mouse?
Oh, this guy? Okay, we can point right here, okay.
So why don't you back up just quickly and show us where, you know, you were referencing in your prior comments?
Yeah. This area right here is, is green, and right at this location, and right at this, this location behind the building, that's all going to be six feet of, of green grass space. We'll have plants in there, probably low-lying plants, and as this drawing shows, we'll have a couple of trees in the corner, but really in, in the area around the back of the building, that would be green grass or shrubs, or some other types of, of plant massings at the bottom of the building.
All right.
But then this would be an eight-foot sidewalk around the perimeter, but it would hug the sidewalk around that corner for the aforementioned reasons. Then the issue on this, the sidewalk is really, the, the only real pinch point we have on this location, we can, we can make this sidewalk out here eight feet, we can address any other locations on the site, even this piece here, we can make that eight feet. What's happening in this location is, we have a, a dimension that we need north-south across the site. And we are really tight to the, to the setbacks and the easements on this side, and then we've already got this road really kind of under construction. So we've got some catch basins and some other infrastructure in place that were, that were designed before we had the final designs on the ramp. So now we have a final design, we have a typical dimension north-south, and what that allows us to do is really eight, a six-foot walk right through here along the length of the ramp. And it's, as Jay mentioned, the only way we can really make that work is either we jog this road to the north a couple of feet, and then have a little bit of a discontinuity in terms of the straight shot on the street, or we'd have to cut off a couple of feet of the ramp in order to make that a six-foot, an eight-foot sidewalk. I think what, what helps me looking at this and not have the concern with eight-foot walks is, this is kind of in the middle of the walkway. Folks are going to come from the west, come to the park, or come to the, to the office. I also think from the, from the east side, we're going to come in, come to the park. This is probably not a huge transportation area for, for folks walking through here. So I'm, I'm more comfortable with this location being six feet than I am really on really any part of the site. So again, we're asking for the two aspects of the conditionals, the conditions that were approved of the Planning Commission to be waived for the, this corner and the location of sidewalk and the boulevard, and then just for this piece in front of the north side of the ramp being a six-foot walk rather than a eight-foot walk.
Questions for either Mr. Scott or Mr. Parks on these two particular issues, which I think are embodied in conditions 14 and 15 in the resolution? All right, I think you've done a good job of explaining them. Okay. Did you want to proceed further, Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. I'm going to ask Bill Witrock to come up with RSP Architects and then just briefly walk through the parking garage design itself. He'll touch on some of the building architecture as well. And then following that, you know, we're available to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Scott. Mr. Witrock, would you give us your full name and business address, please?
Good evening. I'm Bill Witrock with RSP Architects, 1220 Marshall Street in Minneapolis. And kudos to all of us for making it through the deep snow here. Service is, is rewarded by snow. So, thank you. I will run through the basic architecture as is in your package. RSP was commissioned to be the design architect for the parking structure. Walker Parking will, is the architect of record and engineer of record. So I will also run through the basic architectural approaches for the two hotels and the retail buildings. So in your packet, the first, the first piece of architecture is parking structure.
Do you want to use the, do you want to use the overhead?
Yes.
Mr. Witrock?
Yep.
Because Ms. Bennerott can help you set up for the use of the overhead, if you want. I take it the materials that you have aren't part of the PowerPoint, or are they?
It's, it's this, this packet. It's the same packet as that.
Okay, so you want to get on that same page there then?
Yep, got it. Thank you for getting me oriented here. Okay, so the first, the first set here is the plan of the parking structure. Can you, is that on your screens?
It is.
All right. As you can see, that the parking structure will have two entrances off of Viking Boulevard to the south, and this plan actually shows an intent of what the Phase Two might be. Both elevator cores for the, on the east side, which is on the right hand of the plan, Both elevator cores for the, on the east side, which is on the right hand of the plan, and the northwest corner are intended to be outside the footprint of the parking structure, and those become pieces of architecture for, that you'll see in the elevations. So, this is the very basic footprint here, and you can see on the east side, there is the area that will be used for snow removal. The front, the north elevation was developed to enhance and give, enhance the open space. The open space was developed so that there was a series, all the buildings would open up as a front door to this open space. The architecture here is organized to create a backdrop for the activity and occupation of the green space by people. There's a little bit of a focus architecturally with the tan elements, which is precast with an architectural finish. We have a sample here that we can show you of that. And then, a series of four artistic panels, which are, which, the scope of which is being developed now. Those panels are intended to provide some visual backdrop and some visual centering of the open space.
Are the fixture, the electronic digital panels, what are they?
Right now, that is not being considered in the scope of work. Right now, they are looking to be, it has been discussed as being seasonal pieces of art, potentially more permanent applications, but not a digital application at this point.
Okay. But nonetheless, panels that could be changed out, as you say, seasonally, or some other cycle?
That's the intent, that's the intent of this concept, is to have those to be available, to be modified over time.
All right.
On the left-hand side of the image, you see the elevator core for the hotels. And the elevator core is intended to have a glass curtain wall corner, which wraps the corner, and then a brightly painted elevator core, so that the internal illumination of that would give that a very easy orientation for hotel occupants and others who are arriving at the parking structure. This is how you get your vertical transportation. On the south side, we're taking a different approach. The south side has great sun levels on it, so we are approaching the design as a landscaping design. In the middle portion, we are proposing to use a green screen, of which I have a sample here, to promote growth of plants to walk up this lattice work. This will take a little bit of time, but they do eventually get filled up with the proper plants and become green walls. The entrances, we are proposing to put a translucent panel that will be illuminated, either in, we're studying that to be illuminated from the inside or the outside, whichever is going to give us the best look. But that is intended to provide a very obvious entrance into the parking structure. The corners are intended to be wrapped with a perforated metal panel, and that is to bring the architecture around the corner, so that there's, as you approach the building there, it's a bit of architecture in the corner. The southwest, get my Boy Scout directions correct here, the southwest corner, there is a signage armature to be constructed on the corner as a way to identify, A, the project, Pentagon Village, and multiple tenants that would be in the project. They've not been identified as to who would be on those. So, here's the basic elevations. You can see this is for Phase One, north and south elevations. The side elevations are intended to be relatively simple construction, with the emphasis of architecture on the corners, to keep your eye to the places where you need to enter and exit the buildings. On the right-hand side, you can see photographic examples of materials, and we have some of those, we have those physical examples here. The precast color is a, rather a tan-based earth color, and it will have an acid-etched finish, so it'll be an architectural finish. And there is a picture of the vegetative screens in, as they applied with, with full growth. I will go through, I am not the architect of record for the hotels or the retail, but we'll go through the architecture as it is now. And we have had a chance with Mr. Scott to review these designs and apply the master plan philosophy to these, to these designs as they evolved. This is the Hawkeye Hotel. It is a dual-use hotel, or dual-flag hotel, and this shows the five levels as proposed. The approach here is to provide a multi-material, multi-color approach, so that the buildings themselves provide a variety of textures and variety of scales. The red colors were emphasized to be corners of high visibility. They, in plan, those are the corners that are at the most visible as you approach the site vehicularly and from a pedestrian standpoint. And so, the materials wrap around the building. This has a fairly contemporary approach. The architect was talking about providing some linearity, some linear vocabulary, punctuated with some punched-window openings, again, giving a variety to the overall architecture. This is the Watermark Hotel. This is the, the two, the two-building hotel on the southeast corner. And in this case, the same approach was taken to provide a variety of materials and break down the scale of that building, so that there's a visual interest, with not one material dominating the overall elevation. We took, we instructed the architect to take a contemporary approach, so we have horizontal-oriented corrugated metal, a full wood metal panel, which is the brown color, and then a fiber cement panel modulated, and then the lighter color is a masonry, an architectural masonry. Again, there are samples provided for that. And as we walk around the corner, it's, you can see how this was applied on all the elevations. The rendering is from the south, the northeast corner of their parcel, looking into the site. The road you see there is coming off of Computer, and that's the one that leads to, to the parking structure and to the open space. And the buildings were set back to create this open space at the corner, to give some good respect for the approach, and for giving the green space a little bit of visibility and prominence at the entrance to the, to the overall project. This is a view looking in the opposite direction. And you can see the variety of materials. I did mention that we also promoted that these materials are in different planes, so that there's not one flat facade. This is the elevations of the retail buildings on the north side. And these are taking a very contemporary approach. These are intended to give a vocabulary to the site. They're the first buildings that are seen off of 77th. And again, we are using contemporary materials, corrugated metal panels in a standard aluminum finish, again, wood panels, so that there's some repeated materials throughout the project, and a combination of masonry and other colors of metal panels. On the north elevation, you'll see that there are the addition of green, those vegetative screens again. So, along 77th, the building will have multiple layers of materials as vehicles are passing by. And pedestrians will have a softer material as their first experience, their first layer. Again, these elevations, they walk around the corners. You can, I will note that the corners, we push the glass of the storefronts to the corners, and the glass wraps around the corners. Again, this is intended to break down the scale and bring a lighter scale element at the corners. This is representing the two-story retail building on the corner of 77th and Computer. Again, this is designed with the same materials as the other two retail buildings, and similar architectural composition. The two-story, the second story, is that, that has an office in it, right, Jay? Okay. So, it's intended to have retail on the ground level, and then the second level will have an office component. Again, very contemporary approach, similar materials as the retail buildings. So, on a very high level, that's the architectural approach and the architectural evolution of design as we've, as we've completed it to date.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Witrock. Questions for Mr. Witrock or Mr. Scott?
For council members?
Member Fisher?
I saw you taking notes down there. I thought you had a few questions.
Yeah, so, and I get that, you know, the hotel developments kind of bring their own architecture to the table, but it feels like the five-story hotel in the middle has a whole different vocabulary than the rest of the site. And I'm just curious, and, you know, maybe that's okay, you know, that there's some variety, too. But, but what strikes me more about it is the materiality of that building. It's, you know, you talked about, and I would agree with you, the, is it the water walk?
Water walk.
The dual buildings. There's a lot of in and out. I think the materials have a lot, I think that one is very successful, right? But the five-story one feels very flat, and it feels, I'm, it's not as clear to me what all the materials are. I see a lot of paint, and I see like, sort of hints at a lot of drive-it. Is that what we're seeing? You know, what kind of texture are we going to see there?
For, for the most part, it is a masonry base with some of the drive-it insulation stucco finish on the upper levels. That's correct. The building, if you look at this.
Would you just scroll back to that, Mr. Witrock, so we have it as a reference in front of us while we're visiting about the Hawkeye Hotel?
Yep.
And that's, that's enough of a thing to deal with, the name Hawkeye.
So, masonry base, which would be the darker?
At least it's not yellow and black.
The darker level. And then, the colors up above would be a stucco finish. There is some elements of metal panel in here. Not exactly sure where those are, and we'll have to get into that in detail, but the idea here is that the building does have a variety of materials, a variety of colors, which will provide that breakdown in scale. I will, I'm going to, I'm going to flip to the plan very quickly.
Do we have a materials board on the Hawkeye Hotel?
I, okay, yes, there's one been submitted. I will say, on the plan here, the L-shaped building is the Hawkeye Hotel, and the plan does represent multiple panels, multiple planes. So, the elevations don't represent that expressly, but the plan does indicate that there are multiple planes, which will help break up your first concern about a planer building.
But where people are spending time at the street level, that's sort of a masonry, that's a dark brick? Is that what I'm seeing?
The material would be represented by this masonry material here and here. So, it would have a texture and a, the, it would have a texture to fill out that composition.
Okay. I mean, even that diagram right there where your hand is feels a little bit more, I get more texture just from that than I was in the.
Correct.
Document that we had. And my other concern, and I don't want this to be sort of an architectural thing, it's not really what this is all about tonight, but the red, is that just red paint, and how does that stay red in about 10 years?
That is an integral color with the material. It will be, it won't peel or come off.
It won't be pink in 10 years?
I can't answer to physics, but red is, red is one of those colors that sunlight does affect. Now, the, that used to be the standard question. The chemistry of these, of these materials has improved and stabilized these colors, so I believe that I could, I could say that this will be red for a reasonable amount of time, but, you know, physics will take over.
Yeah, I mean, if it was sort of the modern sort of metal panel, I wouldn't be concerned about it. But I think it's more of the, that stuccoed insulation system, right?
That's correct. That's what's been.
I don't know that there's proven technology yet that'll keep that color what we would want it to be for a long haul, so, that's just a concern I would have with that.
Correct.
Thanks.
Other questions at this point in time for Mr. Witrock or Mr. Scott? Gentlemen, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Witrock, would you go back to the, the north elevation on the parking garage, please? All right. So, let's scroll back and show us the site plan with that beautiful pavilion in the middle. And then, let's go, oh, there, okay, that's good, that's helpful. All right, so, here's what I'm concerned about. I like the south side of the ramp better than the north side of the ramp, which faces the beautiful courtyard and all the other buildings. The notion of having a conventional-style suburban parking ramp without any kind of a skin on it really bothers me. I think you've dealt with that a little bit on the south side with the panels, with the corrugated panels. And I can't say I like the way this looks at all on the edges. I mean, I like the glass corridor in the corner. I wish we were seeing something more like we have down at Centennial Lakes behind Pinstripes, where you, you know, you know it's a parking ramp, but it's got that facade on it. I think this could be particularly important as parking demand increases. And so, i-if we had a rendering of this that was six stories or seven stories tall, and now it just looks like an open-air parking ramp, a conventional-style parking ramp that we've seen for decades in suburbia, I think it's a detriment to the development, because I think the architects and the developer, the master developer, have done a wonderful job on this 12-acre piece of property, and it has so much potential. But I feel like that potential is diminished by the fact that we don't have this north side dealt with in particular, and then the east and the west sides, too, in the manner that you dealt with the south side, where you're getting some, where you're going to try to put some greenery there and maybe have a green wall. So, facing on Viking Drive towards the car wash is the nicest part of the parking ramp, in my opinion. And I think we need to do something more with the face of this thing, the primary entrance of the, of the ramp, other than what I'm seeing here. I don't, I don't, I'm not satisfied with what I'm seeing here on the ramp.
Carol?
We're heading to the Phase Two build-out, which might address some of your concerns.
I think, yeah, if you want to talk about this, this is Phase One that you're referring to, and it may look a little unfinished, but there's a plan here in place that puts a lot of glass and a lot of architectural detail in the front of that garage, which you can see some of in this particular example here, and maybe better.
Yeah, I mean, I see it in the corners, but I don't see it, I don't see it masking, I don't see a skin around the whole thing that's, that's appealing to me. And I, and if I'm, if I'm going to be a tenant in an office building that's on top of that ramp, I'm driving in from 77th, straight in towards this beautiful courtyard that you've got, and I'm looking straight into cars parked in a, in a, in a parking ramp, because of the way you've got it configured here. To me, it's a big mistake.
Well, let's talk a little bit about what the screening material is there, because it is screened. Maybe, Bill, you can go through that a little bit. But again, this particular graphic doesn't really do it justice, because it's a phasing approach.
Correct.
We're not building all of the skin on the garage, Phase One, until we come back with the office component. So, you have to understand that the, to the right side of that graphic is somewhat unfinished looking, but that's all going to be a glass kind of vertical element tower, if you will, with elevator and stairs.
Correct.
Which will be backlit and quite nice, actually.
It's, I mean, the other drawing was much more helpful to me, that one. I'm seeing an enormous amount of open space, where I'm going to be looking at cars parked in a parking ramp as I drive in towards this beautiful central courtyard.
The, the cars themselves will be screened by the actual spandrels of the parking structure, so you won't see automobiles or headlights. The intent here was to.
That should be true, yeah.
The intent here was to emphasize the entry points. Again, you can see how that's done with the glass corners where the elevator cores are, and also provide a smaller-scale backdrop for the open space, which is the Phase One architecture. architecture on the first two or three levels. So the intent there is not to decorate the overall parking structure, but to keep your eye focused on the pieces that matter at a pedestrian scale. That was the approach on this part.
Well, I don't, I don't frankly agree with you-
So Phase One is set up for that.
Because if I'm driving in there at six and seven stories, what I'm seeing in front of me is open slits for parking. My eye is going to move away from those visual features that I think you want people to look at, which I think are a good idea, but even if you moved those all the way across the front at the second level, that would help a lot. I just, I just think, you're not going to satisfy me with your arguments that you're advancing so far. If it looked like, if it looked like what we did at Pinstripes or required at Pinstripes, I'd be a lot more comforted by it, or if you were telling me you're going to do something that is equivalent to what you did on the south side with those corrugated panels, architectural panels, I think that's, that's more compelling to me, but what I'm seeing here isn't doing anything for me in terms of beautifying the overall project. That's all, that's all I can tell you. What are you going to do about it?
I was thinking the same thing. You know, I appreciate your comments and they are noted, but we, I want to emphasize that we did approach this with a thoughtful composition, trying to emphasize the parts of the master plan that we thought that the parking structure emphasized and needed to be a backdrop to. I don't know how to answer your question without consultation with the developer.
Let me put it this way, that's another way to look at it. This parking ramp theoretically is going to be built with TIF funds, isn't it? This is, and it's going to have a public parking component. I'm thinking about what I'd like to see as a, as a public official there representing the citizens of Edina, and it's not what I'm looking at. So I don't know what the, I don't know how much more it would cost incrementally to think about some sort of beautification strategy beyond what you got, and I, and I'm comfortable with the idea that on the Phase One, what I'm seeing is something I could live with, but as you go up, I'd like to see some sort of a commitment to think about some sort of screening mechanism on the, on the north, some architectural features on the northeast and west sides that help make this structure not so pronounced in looking like a suburban, typical suburban parking ramp.
I think that's a reasonable request to attach the additional architectural considerations as Phase Two is implemented with the office building. A lot of those design criteria are still variable-
But attach it now.
But there is opportunity to evolve that.
Attach it now, but trigger it on Phase Two.
Yes. Mr. Gunderson? Is it Phase Two issue?
You could amend the resolution in front of you tonight to add that condition for Phase Two.
Okay.
We were just saying as we're, as it evolves to Phase Two, we can evolve that design to take into your account of your concerns at this, because that's when it does really get to that fruition or that visibility that you're objecting to at this point. So there is room for evolving the design as Phase Two with the new office building comes into closer or finer design criteria. Does that help, does that help your concerns?
That could help in our conversation here that we have as a council, I mean maybe I'm the only one who feels this way, so we'll see.
If we were to make a, an adjustment to the architecture of the parking ramp, it really would be architectural adjustments, so it would not be structural, because we'd obviously be building the ramp, you know, soon. So these would be architectural enhancements that would basically be clipped on or, you know, on the front of the garage itself.
Right.
Which I think is what you're referring to, Mr. Mayor, but, and those are some things that we can certainly evaluate, and we would have some time to be able to evaluate that component that would not have any impact on schedule with the garage itself.
Yeah, I don't want to hold up your schedule. So speaking of schedule, what, assuming approval tonight, what's your tentative schedule?
As I mentioned earlier, the plans for the ramp are being designed right now and should be finished in the next couple of weeks, and they would then be submitted to building officials for a permit. Foundation permit would be the first component.
Last time you were here, I think you said you were going to start doing some work in February on the, on the foundational work for the, for the Hawkeye Hotel.
Well, all of the other vertical elements will start probably in the spring.
Okay.
So when weather permits, so you know, April, May, whatever that timeline is, so all of that being approved then tonight is going to move into building documents that are going to then get submitted for building permits, and we would expect a lot of vertical activity on the site this summer. We'll be finishing all of the above-grade site work improvements this summer, so the plaza area, all of the landscaping, all of these things will be finished by the end of the summer as well. So it'll be a very finished site by the end of the summer with a number of vertical elements under construction.
Okay, good. And what's the status on the water walk contract?
Water walk contract to sign. So we have both hotel contracts signed, and both of those hotels, we would expect to move forward very quickly, they'd be under construction this summer.
Okay. I didn't mean to dominate the conversation here. Fellow council members, any other questions for the applicant?
I'm happy to hear that they're not going to wait till snowmelt in August to get going, so, you know.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Teague, anything further? Director Teague, from your point of view? All right, this is a public hearing matter, is there anyone in the audience, I'm going to open this up for public testimony now or public comment, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the council with respect to the requested action in this matter, which is to essentially amend what we'd previously approved to increase the size of one of the hotels from four stories, 193 rooms, to five stories, 235 rooms, construct one parking ramp instead of two, that would accommodate all the parking requirements with no variances, and allow construction of the two-story office retail building in Phase One. That's what's different about this matter compared to what we previously approved. Anyone wish to come forward and testify? All right, hearing nothing, seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? An emotion second to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? What are council members' thoughts on the explanations of the applicant with respect to conditions 14 and 15 in the resolution, which were the conditions imposed by the planning commission, with respect to sidewalks based on the explanation of Mr. Parks and Mr. Scott?
I want to see the boulevard sidewalks.
And what about with the respect to the, it says an eight-foot sidewalk to be constructed through the middle of the development going north, south, and east and west, and condition 15, Mr. Parks talked about a small segment on the north side of the parking ramp where they were constrained and needed to be six feet for the length of the parking ramp, it looked to me like.
I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that one?
It's just the, it's the court, you know, the-
It's the 14.
-public ground along the corridor, along the corridor, yeah, 14.
14, you'd like to see remain in 15.
I just don't, right.
Okay.
I've been frustrated enough with the lack of attention to the public corridor along 77th and Mount Computer, and so to chisel it away further is something I'd rather not see.
And with respect to the dialogue that I had with members about adding, with the applicant about adding a, in Phase Two, mandating architectural elements be added to the parking ramp to, to screen it on the northeast and west sides, what are, what are council members' thoughts on that idea? Member Anderson?
Yeah, I, I think that that was a good catch on your part, and I think that, that architectural elements introduced into that parking ramp on arrival is going to turn out to be quite important. I think that it's, it's a great project, but that was not well-attended to, and I do agree that the boulevard-style sidewalk on 77th especially is important.
Member Fisher, any comment? Or member Brendel? Member Fisher?
Well, I think I would prefer the boulevard-style sidewalk. I, this is where it really is bad to be an architect, because I'm trying to figure out how they're going to do that, but I think it would be a worthy goal to get the sidewalk moved away from that street. I mean, we know there are parts of our city right now where we have that situation, and we hate it. Everyone hates it, it doesn't work well. Somehow we got to find a few feet there and, and figure out how to make that work. I, I'm still looking at all the turn lanes, and I'm a little puzzled. That's a serious number of turn lanes, and I-
That was my question.
You know, I'm assuming folks know what they're doing and, and we're anticipating all those cars, but it's, it's also creating, I'm not blaming it on the turn lanes, but, but there's a lot of turn lanes. One thing I would like to say about the parking, and it relates to that future potential variance, I think one of our comments or in the resolution should be that we have a really unique opportunity here that we'll actually be building the hotels with the parking, and I think it should be somehow figure out to measure exactly how that parking's being used. There shouldn't be any mystery in Phase Two when we come for a variance or not a variance to be able to say, this is how many people are parking on that level on a typical night or weeknight and weekend, you know, what time they're there and what time they're not there, and now if we're, if we're bringing in other uses, we'll know exactly how they can overlay on that. We don't get that opportunity every day, we should take advantage of that, because the last thing I want to do is build more parking than we need. I don't think that benefits anybody. And I think the idea of tying with that, the, the idea of the architectural elements, understanding that we can't just cover up the outside of a parking ramp and not affect the airflow and all of these other requirements that are going to be, be there, but, but I think there, there can be some things that are done to, to dress that up a little bit.
Good. Member Brendel?
Thank you. The, the number of turn lanes or the number of lanes at that corner of Computer Avenue, I think, was, was something that, that I looked at and I, it's, it's hard for me at this stage to anticipate what the demand is going to be, but that's a lot of lanes. It's, 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 how many people do you anticipate are going to work at this location? How many cars do you anticipate are going to be coming around that corner? And does that number warrant that intensive, a, a, a street design? That we could eliminate one lane and be able to have a boulevard sidewalk?
So council member Brendel, if I can chime in on that one? So I'm looking at the traffic study, what we had them do was use the AUAR for the forecasted 2040 numbers with development occurring along 77th Street. So this, those lanes aren't just for this project, it's for potential projects in the future, because if we don't do it now-
I see.
-we'll lose the space to all these things that we're currently talking about. So that's why those lanes, they look like a lot now, but if development happens on the north side, down 77th, we're going to need them all in the future. And now's our opportunity to get them with this project.
Can we go to the site plan, please? The proposed site plan? That shows, that shows the entire site plan, please? Okay, that one. So looking at that corner where there is six feet or so of green space, is it possible to pull that sidewalk in, at least to the extent that you could pull it in, and have it hug the building rather than hug the street?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think just to make sure that we're all talking the same, from the, from the cursors now, basically when the turn lanes develop and then coming south to this point, is the location that our plan presently has, an eight-foot sidewalk right behind the curb, and there's six feet and then more than six feet of grass or green area between the sidewalk and the building. So, you know, the rest of the site, all along 77th here, it is going to have ample, much, fairly large, large boulevards. On this side, it's large boulevard, this side is large boulevard, as well as, you know, on the north side and then around the furniture road. So really, it's, it's, this is the real pinch point for that boulevard. Again, as I said earlier, we can flop out this eight feet and put that right next to the building, and then we would have green space out along the curb, but-
But you have to get to the crosswalk.
What's that?
You have to get to the crosswalk.
Well, I think we could, I think we could make, I mean, even if we did put the sidewalk, we flipped the green area sidewalk, we can still make those connections, I don't think there's any issue there. It just really has to do with how the sidewalk functions, and also sometimes we have, and this building has not been entirely designed yet, sometimes we also have doors, safety doors out the back, and if we have the sidewalk right up next to the building, sometimes it's difficult for us to have steps coming down because the sidewalk is going to be right behind the building. So, again, I just wanted to say that it's really in this area that I'm advocating for a sidewalk out on the street and the green area next to the building. It's not the whole area, it can be done, physically can be done, but then there will be this disjointed sidewalk in the first floor elevation up here, which, which prevents us from having any access doors out that eastern side of the building, because they'd have to have some steps coming down. I don't know if that's, I want, you can definitely disagree with what we want to do, but I want to at least make sure that we're talking the same thing.
No, I mean, it's really good to know the, the circumstances behind where the sidewalk is placed at this point, giving that building as much flexibility as it needs, being that it's unknown.
Right, right. One additional comment as well is, it's not really that uncommon to have sidewalks up next to the turn lanes, because oftentimes there's limited rightaways, and when the turn lane comes out, I mean, it's not that an uncommon situation to have a walk right behind the curb in a, in a turn lane area. Were there any other questions for me? Mrs. Brendel?
As far as, I, so the additional green space that is gained by putting the parking all-in-one structure, I can see lots of landscape elements. What other, what other features? Have you got stormwater features? Are you using the, this added green space to be able to capture anything?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of council, are we talking about this area?
Yes, we are.
Okay. The stormwater system on this property, as it was developed, takes water from the buildings, the parking lots, the green areas, and it puts it in below-ground vaults that allow us to infiltrate into soils. This is a design that we put together here really last fall, and it's actually been constructed on the site presently. What this really does is it gives us, it gives us less volume of water that's running off the site. So even if this was highly impervious, the way we had the parking lots designed and the ramps designed before, the system was, was built to accommodate city and watershed rules. What this will do with some more green area around the CityWalk project is just reduce the amount of volume that runs off the site. So there is an environmental benefit. Our, our systems will only be used to a 90% level or 95% capacity rather than 100% that they originally designed at.
Okay. Manager Neil, I sent a photograph to you earlier of bike lockers, can we get that up? It's, it's, this is an idea that's kind of beyond what we're actually looking at here, but if, if people are, and I anticipate that, that there may be a good number of people who bike to work because this is so conveniently located to the trail, I don't see them leaving their bike at a bike rack all day long while they're at work. And so these bike storage units are, and some of them are completely closed, this one happens to be screened in, but, but there are rows of these in downtown Minneapolis and in a number of places where they house 20 or 30 bicycles, and the individual has a lock, and they have their bike in their, in their, in their locker. And, oh, that's, yeah, this one particularly is what, that's, that's, ultimately, that's kind of what, if there is a space on the site for this, I think it would be a great amenity for the people who work there and, and shop there and eat there, so. amenity for the people who work there and, and shop there and eat there, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I do know that my office has similar types of lockers, but they're oftentimes associated with the office component of folks who will, will ride to work and have them, but those are oftentimes housed actually inside the building. And I guess, Jay, you can comment on whether or not there's any commitment to do those in the parking decks.
Yes, that's a good point, and we didn't address that in our presentation, but we do have bike lockers built into the design within the parking ramp itself.
Oh, great.
So, they're not going to be a visual detraction from everything else that's going on, but functionally, they're going to be located there, there'll be ample room for that. We didn't talk about this, but we'll have electric vehicle charge stations. So, we've got a lot of different things, components here that are going to enhance, you know, whether it's supporting mass transit, whether it's supporting electrical vehicles, whether it's supporting bike traffic to the site, all of those components are part of the overall design.
Okay. I can't remember if we have talked about how you're going to use the rough space on all these buildings, if there's any thought about solar or what you're going to do with the rough space.
I, you know, we've looked at some of that. At this point, we don't have any active plans for that. We do have the possibility to do that with the office component, and, and that'll be evaluated, I think, when we get to the office building itself. That may be an important consideration for a particular user as well.
Okay, great.
Prompt any further questions by members? So, to members, Staunton's notion of creating enough room for a boulevard sidewalk on the, on the Computer Avenue, 77th Street side, member Brindle, that your, you know, your concerns are also addressing, we've got a site here roughly 525,000 square feet. I think the notion is they can find enough room to create that boulevard sidewalk on that, on that corner over there. So, we've got, I checked with our city attorney and also with Director Teague on how we'd like the condition to read with respect to the architectural elements that, that should be placed on the northeast and west sides of the parking ramp in Phase Two. Attorney Knutson advises we can handle both the ordinance and the Resolution 2019 in the single motion, 2019-17. So, member Staunton, we looked at, we talked about conditions, we were going to eliminate Condition 15, which was the eight-foot sidewalk to be constructed to the middle of the development going north, south, east, and west, I think. I didn't hear any opposition to that notion from council members. And then we, we're going to leave in 14 and then add a new 15, and that condition would read that in Phase Two, architectural elements exub- shall be placed on the north, south, northeast and west sides of the parking ramp that are subject to council approval as to the design of those elements. So, with those changes having been made to Resolution 2019-17, is someone prepared to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
If you're a second?
Second.
Discussion, further discussion?
My only concern is to not get so prescriptive about exactly how the elements are to be put on and what side they're put on. You know, I, I want to let, let the architects kind of figure out how to make us happy, but could you just read that one more time? And maybe it's not too prescriptive. Are you, are you saying it has to be on every elevation?
I am. Except for the south, yeah. The north, which would be the main entrance, the east and west sides really have exposure to other buildings on the premises, including what we think in Phase Two will be the, potentially the most beautiful office building we've seen in Edina for many years. I just think it's important to have that screening on all three sides.
And I, I don't, I don't disagree at all with having more architectural interests. I just don't want to get too prescriptive and let it, but I think it'll be fine.
The notion is that it would be subject to council approval when they come back for Phase Two approval.
All right, sounds good.
I guess, and I'm glad we're talking about that again, I meant to ask this. The, the photos of the parking structure that we've seen, I don't think have enough detail for us to know what really it's going to look like. I don't know if there's texture to the gray panels that are there, so, so maybe the architectural interest that we're looking for is already there, but the, it's, all we're really seeing is a rough drawing. So, I, it's hard for me to know where we're going to get by asking them to come back and show us what they're going to do.
Well, the place we're going to get is that in Phase Two, we're telling them they have to come back with some architectural elements that screen the northeast and west sides in a way that's acceptable to us. So, they end up with something that looks, I'll use by example, the pinstripes ramp, because it's clear from the renderings that we've seen so far, it looks like a convention, except for the elements on the south side and the key elements on the north side that are in the middle of the proposed ramp. The rest of it's wide open like any old suburban ramp.
That's, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to prevent having happen as it gets taller, that it has some screening effect that has an architectural element to it that is acceptable to the council. And that was, that's the purpose of that condition.
All right.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-17 as amended and Ordinance Number 2019-03 approving the zoning ordinance amendment for the final site plan for Phase One. Wait a minute, should, would the, would the maker of the motion be prepared to waive second reading? Who was the maker?
It was me and yes.
All right. And the seconder will be prepared to waive second reading?
I did second, yes.
Yeah, all right. So, we've got a motion second on the Resolution 2019-17 and the Ordinance 2019-03, along with a waiver of second reading. This is a voice vote matter, simple majority. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. It's a great project. We're just trying to make it as good as it can be. All right, we're out of the public hearing portion of the agenda now. We're going to move on to reports and recommendations. And the first matter here we have is a request for financial participation for 727250 France Avenue South, and, and I believe there's some redundancy to what we heard at the HRA meeting the other morning, but I'll let our economic development manager, Bill Nuenendorf, address that issue. Mr. Nuenendorf?
Yes, good afternoon, or good evening. The, the item in front of you tonight is, is consideration of the proposed and recommended terms and conditions for the use of tax increment financing on the project at 727250 France Avenue. A companion item was on the agenda of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority just a few days ago, or actually last week, and that group, or this group, meeting as the HRA, had some suggestions and some concerns about those terms. So, late last week, staffs, staff sat down with the developer again and made some modifications to those recommended terms that you would find in your package tonight. I have the same presentation that I have from last week, but I think I wanted to just run through it in abbreviated fashion and get to some of the changes that, that you had requested. As, as I start the presentation and walk through some of the summary, I just want to remind folks that we have the full complement of, of the team in the audience this evening. On behalf of the project, Mr. Blake Bonjean, the property owner and owner and developer is with us this evening. Michael Margulis, he's, his prime, prime development consultant is with us. And on the architectural side, Sheldon Berg from DJR Architects is here tonight. From the city side, the negotiations have been completed by, by myself as well as with assistance from Jay Lindgren from Dorsey and Whitney, Jay's here this, this evening, and also professionals at Ellers Associates. Nick Anhut and Jason Arzold helped in this effort. Nick is out this evening, but Jason Arzold is here joining us tonight, and the whole group is available for any questions as we move through this recommendation. So, I'm going to jump through some of the, the background here, but the, the project that we're talking about is the same project that was granted preliminary zoning approvals back in December. So, there's an aerial of the rendering looking to the southeast. So, if you were at the Sunrise Living Facility, this is, or if you were a bird floating above the Sunrise Living Facility, this is what you would see. Two new mixed-use buildings with apartments and retail on the first floor. Parking is hidden inside and underneath the buildings. You'll notice a lot of green open space and a lot of plaza space, that's the same. And then on the far western edge of the project, you have a buffer of mature trees that would be preserved, and then a series of 10 townhomes. So, the project is the same as in December. Here's the, the rendering looking from France Avenue to the northwest, if you were over by the, by Gent or by the, by Dick Blick or Pinstripes, this is what you would see. The recommendation this evening is to use the tax increment financing tool. It's one of the few financing tools that's available to us in Minnesota to help make a desirable project possible, to help with the financing. And with tax increment financing, the chart here is one that we've used on many occasions, but essentially, the, the taxation rate, the tax level that's in place today continues to be in place for all the taxing groups, city, county, school, et cetera, for the next 20-some years. But those new taxes that are spurred by this project are then used to help fund some of those public improvements in the project. When all is said and done, when the project is finished, when the, the pledge and the use of TIF is paid out, that whole value, the base plus the increment, goes on the total tax rolls to the benefit of all the taxing agencies, school, city, county, et cetera. Many questions have come up recently about the use of TIF and whether or not this puts the city at any financial risk. This is a, a chart that shows four typical methods that communities use to fund TIF pledges. On the far left is the tool that, that the city of Edina strongly prefers, and that's the one with the least amount of risk to the city, often called a pay-go note, but essentially, it's a giant IOU. If the developer finishes the project successfully, delivers what they promised to deliver, we would issue a TIF note that essentially says that as we collect these new incremental taxes from them, we would use that to pay down that obligation. On the far other extreme of the spectrum is where a city would actually go out and issue debt that would then be granted to the developer in the very early stages. It puts the city's money at risk. That has, that has been a, a common tool in the past, but in, in Edina, frankly, we find that most projects don't need that. We strongly prefer to use the, the method that provides the least or no risk to city So, in the last several years, we also, also get questions about the use of TIF and how often we, we use the tool. Since the Great Recession ended around 2010, Edina has seen 52 major redevelopment projects, not just new tenants or new businesses coming and going, but 52 wholesale reinventions of properties. And the city has decided to use tax increment financing on, on only five of those projects, from Southdale Center to help get that revitalized and turned around a few years ago, the 66 West Affordably Priced Apartments, the Nolan Maines and the central parking ramp at 50th and France, the project that you've just considered, Pentagon Village, that Pentagon South project, and then most recently, a mixed-use project up at 44th and France. When it comes to the use of TIF in Edina, this chart shows the tax base that is currently part of a TIF district. Edina is shown in the green bar, about 3% of our tax base is currently part of a TIF district. And for comparison purposes, we put a lot of communities that are in the metro area, either are immediate neighbors or, or similar to Edina, and you find that we're on the lower end of the spectrum, kind of the middle, lower end. A lot of our neighbors use TIF to a much higher degree. They've made that choice as, in the best interest of, of their community, but in Edina, we use TIF very sparingly. It was also asked what we would project this number to look like in a few years if this project would go forward, and based on, on what we know today and best estimates, about 3.9% of Edina's tax capacity would be in a TIF district if this project is approved. Also by the numbers, these two pie charts show, on the right shows the total acreage of Edina. There's over 10,000 acres of land in Edina. About 2% of that is included in a TIF district. And then the, but, the chart on, on the left, again, shows the tax capacity. About 96% of the city's tax base is not in a TIF, only about 3-point-some percent is included within a TIF. Also worth noting that these numbers will change pretty significantly in just a few years. The city's largest TIF district is that Southdale Two District. It's been highly successful, but it will sunset. It will shut down in just a couple of years, and so you'll see these numbers reduced pretty Towards the end of 2018, in November, December, the developer made a request to staff in the amount of $12 million to consider as a TIF pledge to support this project. While the zoning was under consideration, towards the end of last year, staff was busy doing an analysis and evaluating that request. We've spent quite a bit of time pushing and pulling on the numbers, making sure that we understand how the project is financed and what that looks like. And after close to three months of analysis, we, we can confirm that there is a substantial budget gap in this project. And but for the use of TIF, as well as grants and additional equity from the owner and, and their partners, this project is not likely to move forward. So, people always talk about the but-for test. But for the use of TIF, will this project move forward? And after review and analysis, staff believes there is a clear gap here and that the but-for test has been satisfied.
Bill, can I interrupt for a second just to ask? What's the size of that gap in the judgment of staff and Ellers?
Yeah, so, the gap is pretty significant. It's, it's about, it's in the mid $20 million.
So, 23, I think the staff reported, is that right?
23 or 24. I don't recall off the top of my head. But, yeah, it's a significant gap, and that, that's measured to what a typical return would be for a developer.
What is that, assume the return is?
Uh, uh-
If you don't know off the top of your head, we can save that question.
Yeah, I'm blanking off the top, top of my head, but I might pick on Jason for that one.
Seven percent?
Was it seven?
Seven percent of general cost.
Yeah, we did, a 7% return on cost for this project is what we were using as a measure.
23 to $24 million gap, assuming a 7% return?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Correct. So, the use of TIF plugs about half of that, but then the owner and developer has to dig deeper and settle for a lower return, and that's something they're willing to do. They believe in the project, they believe in the site, they believe in Edina, but they have to make some kind of reasonable return on the project. The fundamental part of the TIF term sheet, and that's what I want to focus on tonight, is the minimum improvements that will be delivered, right? When we, when we talk about a TIF pledge, when the developer successfully delivers all of these minimum improvements, it's at that point that the city pledges the use of TIF. So, the, the improvements are very similar to what we considered last week at the HRA, completely preparing the whole site, not just half of it, not just a portion of it, but all of it, delivering the two apartment buildings with commercial on the first floor, delivering a pad for the townhomes on the west. But then, something we added based on your direction from last week was that we really wanted to, to see the townhomes built, not just a pad delivered for the next developer because chances are that they will be built by a different builder and a different developer. So, we modified the term sheet. You'll, you'll see it's outlined, or it's underlined in red in your attachments tonight, that the, the developer is willing to commit to beginning and finishing the townhomes as a condition of this TIF assistance. If they don't start them on time, we don't issue the TIF note. If they don't finish them on time, we would issue a penalty in the amount of half a million dollars. So, they have a lot of incentive to start and finish on schedule. The total project cost is around $111 million, and when it comes to the use of TIF, we have, we have two charts. I laid them out here side by side. I know they get a little bit confusing, so I thought I'd just walk through it a little bit more tonight. The chart on the left shows all of the costs that would be qualified per Minnesota TIF statute, qualified to be reimbursed with TIF. That's fine for the Minnesota statute, but in Edina, we typically take a- That's fine for the Minnesota statute, but in Adina, we typically take a little bit more stringent view. We don't always recognize some of those costs. So while the development will see about $22.3 million in state-qualified costs, staff is recommending that we issue no more than $12 million. That was the original request of the developer. That doesn't make the project whole, but it's enough to keep it moving. And that's where we'd like to step in and make sure that it does get moving. So the chart on the right shows the types of expenses that we feel are easily and readily defendable as using tax increment finding in this case. Demolition and site preparation, there's a significant cost there. There's about 2.3 acres of the property. It's a five-acre site. About 2.3 acres will be built, and then the developer will issue a public easement for permanent public use of those spaces. So it's the streetscape, the sidewalk, all the public realm, that woo-nur, the shared street, that would definitely be qualified. Stormwater improvements to help the neighborhood and the immediate neighbors. The affordable housing, as part of our TIF negotiations, the developer did agree to extend that term of affordability from the 15 years that's typically required by our zoning code to 25 years. So that's part of what we feel is a significant public benefit to justify a TIF pledge of $12 million. We also compared some other alternatives, though, just to make sure we're on the right track. So this chart shows three possibility, or three possible future outcomes. And I'll walk through these. It's a chart, I think pictures might be helpful, but the lowest set of bars, right in the middle of the screen, the blue bar, that's the smallest, shows the current tax base of the existing buildings in their existing condition. One option, frankly, the developer could rehab the buildings, fix the parking structure, put new carpet, put new HVAC systems in there, and rent them out as office space. That definitely is a possibility. And if they were to do that, over the next 20 years, they would, you know, increase in value a little bit, like most things do. And that's the second bar, that's the red line. So right in the middle of the table, if they just reuse the existing buildings, clean them up and put tenants back in there, you can see that they're on the low end as far as the tax capacity that would result. For several months, the developer has also mentioned a Plan B in case the mixed use doesn't work out. They've also considered tearing down the site, building two office buildings. They could probably do that without the use of TIF. We would not see many of the benefits that we've included at this point. And if they tore them down to build office buildings, there certainly is an increase in tax capacity. That's shown in the second comparison there, the office redevelopments. The table on the right, though, shows what we're recommending, and that's with the use of TIF. So on the far right of the screen, the blue line shows that existing base. So if we create a TIF district for 20 years, that base is going to stay flat for 20 years. But when a project of this quality, of this scale and this caliber is built there, when that TIF district is over, the tax capacity to the entire community and all the taxing agencies, you can see in the chart here, it just far exceeds any other option that's reasonably considered for the site. We did want to do this test just to make sure, you know, that this was the right and the best process, and we believe that it is. So our recommended terms are to create a 20-year special housing TIF district. We also considered creating a longer TIF district, a 26-year, but frankly, we found that it wasn't necessary. We can meet the developer's request by only doing a TIF for 20 years. We do recommend that we pledge the full request, $12 million in a TIF note that's paid from incremental tax revenues. One note is that the city would retain flexibility. If we have funds available, for example, from the Southdale II district, to pay down that TIF obligation sooner after the project is finished, that's something we might want to consider in a few years. So we're not closing the door on that, but also not committing ourselves to it either. We also feel that we should strongly pursue grants. We have an application in for deed and one coming up for the Met Council. And then the final recommendation is that we're seeking authority to prepare and execute a full TIF agreement in the upcoming months as the project moves on here, and that would legally and formally bind both parties, the city, the HRA, and the developer, to that TIF agreement. The TIF note, as I mentioned, these are just some of the highlights or key points. It's sized on the actual cost of completion. So let's say that the budget comes in under budget, and it's not $111 million, it's $102 million. That TIF pledge would be resized, so it would not exceed $12 million. There's a chance it might be a little bit less. Not a strong chance, but just in case, we wanted to make sure that we capture that. The TIF note would be issued after the project is built, not prior. And we also have what we call "look-back provisions," so that if the project is sold or otherwise valued, and it turns out to be a great value and it delivers a far superior return to the developer, to the point where he didn't need TIF after all, we've included a clawback in the agreement that would allow us to recapture some of that excess profit. Again, our goal in using TIF is to make the project viable and fill the financing gap.
Bill, can I interrupt there? Why 16% on that?
So in this case, we used an internal rate of return of 16%. It's a standard measure in the industry for a project of this type in this location.
How does that relate to the 7% we discussed a minute ago?
They're different measures, so a rate of...
So what's an apples-to-apples comparison?
What's an apples-to-apples comparison?
I mean, are we, if they're making more than the 7%, are we clawing that back?
If they're making...
Maybe that's a question for others.
I might look at Jason for this one. So the IRR is really structured in case that there's a sale, right? Because then you can actually, you know the sales price, you know what the value was. For the return to the developer, that 7%, we typically measure that earlier when they're holding it, and then you can see what their costs were, what their anticipated net operating income is. So that's an early measure, but the clawback and the look-back could happen 15 years in the future. So that's why we use a different measure at that point.
All right. Maybe we can set that aside and discuss it a little further when you're done.
Happy to. The term sheet, as well as my report, also identifies many of the public benefits that we've negotiated as part of this project. Certainly, some of the benefits are obvious. As the project went through the planning commission and the public meetings and the neighborhood meetings and city council, there was a lot of discussion about the right size, the right site plan, et cetera. But a couple of things to note here. Some additional benefits that we've negotiated with the TIF is to increase that term of affordability for the 20% of the units, from that 15 years to 25 years. We've also provided a couple provisions just to account for future possibilities. So the city would retain a first right of refusal if the building is sold in the future and the affordable units are in it. We would have the first crack to potentially acquire those or potentially transfer our right to another person. But the intention there is to try to keep these affordable units affordably priced for as long as possible. The agreement also binds both parties to sit down at some point in the future in good faith and talk about what it would take to extend the affordability. Right now, we've got 25 years, but at about the 24-year mark, we want to sit down and have an honest conversation about what the future looks like. We've also negotiated several land easements on the property, the conservation easement of those mature woods on the west side. The zoning code would typically require a permanent easement on the sidewalks. In this case, we've negotiated easements along all the public streetscape, landscapes, sidewalks, hardscape, et cetera, also along the woo-nur. Also, one other feature of the site plan is the amenity deck on the second level of one of the apartment buildings. The developer has expressed a willingness to make that open to the public, add a stairway from the exterior, add an accessible route. That came up last year, or last week. We made sure we added some language on that. That would also be accessible to the public with a permanent easement. And when you add up all those easements, the chart here shows that of the 5.2-acre site, about 45% of it is covered by a public easement. Typically, a project that we've approved, as we've seen a lot of projects, have a sidewalk easement, and that's it. Maybe an easement on like a fire hydrant or something like that. But here, the owner is willing to grant us about half, just under half of the property as an easement. We've also made some first steps in shared parking in France Avenue. One of the biggest unique features about this whole site is just the willingness of the developer to abide by those Greater Southdale principles and to really follow that plan with the greater setbacks and the step backs of the building, but also to start on the conversation of a different future for parking, right? A lot of driving trends are changing. Who knows where they're going to be in 20 years? But the developer has also agreed to grant a public easement to the entire parking stalls that are on the first level. There's about 30 stalls that are inside the building, but they're on Level 1. You drive in right off the street, and that's where you park, as well as about 180-some stalls or 170-some stalls on the P1 level. And so whether you're visiting the plaza or walking to see a friend or going to the restaurant across the street, you're free to park there. So it's another step in that shared parking strategy. And then one of the biggest benefits that hopefully will never, ever be seen is the underground stormwater. We've known for many years that when this site was built in the late '60s and early '70s, there was not much consideration given to stormwater. And so right now, this site serves as a holding area for the neighboring properties. So the developer is willing to upsize his stormwater facility and put an easement on it so that the neighbors can continue to use that for their water discharge as opposed to building their own facilities. So that's another easement that we've added. And then finally, one of the many conversation points about the site plan included improvements to West 72nd Street. I added a photo here just for an example. It's not specifically what's proposed here, but the developer is willing to commit $1.2 million to do traffic homing from France Avenue to Linmar, that first block. And I know our engineering department is working with their designers as far as what that traffic homing looks like. We also intend to do some additional studies to look at traffic homing features going west into the Cornelia neighborhood. And again, we don't have a specific picture to show of what that improvement is, but I know that our engineering department is working on that. And with the combination of the improvement by the developer, as well as the other improvements, we think we can accomplish that neighborhood goal.
And then the details of that design remain to be approved at the final approval stage, correct? The land use final...
Partially correct, yeah. So we're expecting that in mid to late March, the developer should be up and ready for final site plan approvals. So we're hoping that the final design for that one block stretch can be included in there.
Right. Because that was a condition of the preliminary approval.
That was one of the conditions, right.
That we reimagine that 72nd Street and that that's subject to our approval at that stage.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a summary of the many benefits, as well as the general structure of the term sheet. In summary, after evaluating this for close to three months now, we are confident that there is a financial gap. We're confident to say the project is highly unlikely or will not move forward unless the city can help provide some funding. We will also still rely on the owner kicking in more equity, and we're going to do our best to pursue some external grants to help fill in some of the gaps as well. So staff recommends the terms at our inner package tonight with the modifications that addresses the townhomes. I know that was an important concern by the HRA board, as well as the neighbors. Our full team is here for any questions and happy to provide answers.
Questions for council members? Members talking?
Maybe the representative from LRS could speak to the issue about the clawback versus the rate of return, the 7% versus the 16%?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and Jason Arzold with LRS. So in the term sheet, what's being proposed are really two separate metrics with respect to return on investment. So the first that's in there is a return on cost measurement, and that would be, we'd be able to do that when the project is built and occupied and stabilized. So we'd be looking at the income that's coming off of the project at that point, comparing that against the actual cost to construct. And that's the number, that's the 7% number that we talked about. So developers commonly want to see that number be between 7 and 8%. Right now, we're projecting it's going to be more like 6. So what we're saying is if it does indeed exceed 7%, we have the ability to reduce the amount of the tax increment. Then later on in the project, when it gets to a point where it may ultimately sell, we have a separate measurement called an internal rate of return. What that'll do is take into consideration all of the benefits the developers receive from the project, so all the cash flow each year, including any proceeds from a sale, net proceeds from a sale of the property, present value that down to today's value, and then compare that against their equity investment. So it's a different measurement, and we're saying that's going to be capped at 16%. Typically, we see that be between 15 and 18%. So 16 is a pretty conservative number. So that's the reason why there are two separate pieces. It's a pretty comprehensive and a strong look-back provision.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Bill, another question I had was, and Jason, if you, maybe you can help on this, I don't know, but so some folks have asked, you know, with respect to this $12 million, why would we spend the $12 million here instead of on something like Fred Richards Park or affordable housing on another site? Are we able to spend this money somewhere else?
Yeah, I'll take that one. We've heard that question, definitely. So the challenge is that the money isn't there today. Right now, I mean, how tax increment works is it's those incremental taxes, those new and future taxes. So if the project doesn't move forward, you'll continue to see a fairly meager tax base on the site. If the project does move forward, the way that TIF laws are structured in Minnesota, those incremental taxes can only be spent on those qualified costs generally in that site. So their TIF monies are not like general fund monies that can be used for any purpose that the city council has in their budget. They are restricted funds that can only be used for these specific purposes.
And then if, let's say, let's say we didn't do TIF at all, and by some miracle, this 23, $24 million gap disappears and the project gets built, why can't we take the $12 million from that and put it into Fred Richards or into other affordable housing?
Yeah, another good question. So if that miracle were to happen, let me sit down and recover from that miracle, but if that were to happen, we still don't have a magic extra $12 million.
We don't really get any more money. We just get an increase in our tax capacity, right?
Right, so it goes back down to property taxation 101. Every year when we do our budget, or every two years, the city and the schools and the county do the same thing. They figure out how much they need for that upcoming year, and then they distribute that total cost amongst all the taxpayers, single families, commercial properties, industrial properties. So if there's a big project or a small project without TIF, the city and the schools will still get the money that they request. It just, it comes from a little bit different sources. So if this project is built without TIF, it's not like the city will magically receive $12 million extra that we can do anything we want with. That's just not how property taxes work in Minnesota.
And then with respect to the percentage of our tax capacity that is currently in TIF districts, you had that slide, but, and I thought I remembered it at the HRA, is it 3.9% that we would be at if we did TIF here? Okay, so projected 3.9% if we did TIF on this project?
That's correct, yep. That's in 2021.
And does that take into account the Southdale II going off the rolls?
This still assumes that Southdale is still on the rolls.
So it would be even less than that once Southdale II comes on.
In 2022, that's when Southdale comes back on the tax rolls. So that number would be reduced significantly in 2022.
And then with respect to the risk issue on the pay-as-you-go versus general obligation bonds, in fact, if for some reason this increment doesn't show up, the property doesn't... bonds, in fact, if for some reason this increment doesn't show up, the property doesn't appreciate in value like we anticipate it does, we just don't pay anything on the note, isn't that right? We pay the increment that comes in. If it doesn't come in, then we don't pay, and the developer is the one that's on the hook for, they just don't get repaid on the note.
That's exactly how it works. By using the pay-as-you-go note system, the risk falls in to the developers category. That's what developers do very well. They manage risk, they build things.
Because they're fronting the money.
Correct.
And they're expecting the return to be paid back over time from the increment that comes in. If no increment comes in, they don't get any return on it.
That's exactly correct.
Whereas if we had borrowed ahead of time and given them the money, then we'd be waiting. And if the money didn't come in, then on a general obligation bond, the taxpayers would have to fill that bill. So a lot of the TIF districts you hear of around the country that maybe get in trouble are because there's a general obligation bond, and the appreciation doesn't show up, and then the taxpayers have to pay the shortfall, right?
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, I can just add, that's exactly right. And Bill showed that spectrum of risk for pay-as-you-go versus general obligation bonding. And in this case, the city's not coming up with any money upfront for this project whatsoever. The developer's doing all of that, and the payment to the developer, again, is only coming from 90% of the increment that's actually generated. The city's not obligated to fund any more of that. And if at the end of the term, the note that's issued is not repaid, the city's not obligated to make up the difference.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Other members? Member Brindle?
Thank you. I find that I'm sitting here kind of uncomfortable with the situation I'm in, and that is that the project we approved is different than the project we're considering today. Because the project we approved included 10 townhomes. And the project we're being, that we're looking at relative to this term sheet for tax increment financing has a promise of a building pad for 10 townhomes, and that they will be built someday. But the townhomes are, they're an important piece of this. They're a very important piece of this project. They create a transition buffer between France Avenue, between the larger buildings, and the neighborhood. And I guess my concern is, so we're being asked to consider a TIF term sheet, and if I read all the documents, I will find that the project's different. I mean, this wasn't brought out. We weren't told about it until we discovered it for ourselves. And I guess I'd like to know why it was done that way, and why the project changed.
That's a great question. So when we presented the initial term sheet last week to the HRA, this topic came up. And somewhere in the last several months, after the developer went through the final zone, or through the preliminary zoning, and when we started working on the TIF conversation, we started to better articulate amongst ourselves, not to you unfortunately, amongst ourselves how those four sale units would be delivered. And so in the draft that we prepared last week, we took those townhomes out of the conversation, because we didn't know specifically when they could be delivered. We heard the concerns raised last week, so the updated term sheet this week has three significant changes to it that do mandate that the townhomes be included. And it provides two safety measures to the community. Number one is the TIF note will not be issued until they start construction on those townhomes. So not just building a flat pad, but starting shovel-in-the-ground for that first unit. And if they fail to finish all 10 within a reasonable time period, they're penalized half a million dollars. Now, we've given them about a five-year window to build these 10 units, which is a pretty big window. The reason we did that was not to be overly generous to the developer, but look, for example, recent history, 50th and France, the brownstones on France. A wonderful, beautiful project, four-sale townhome units, high-end, high buck, great project, but those, it took almost 10 years to finish the sale of those last units. Unfortunately, that developer had that project going right as the recession started. So it took several years of sitting onto empty buildings and a couple empty pieces before they could get that last sale. We're hoping there's not another great recession coming, but we're thinking that a five-year window is a reasonable window for four-sale projects. Now certainly, the developer and whomever builder, they choose to build those units, has every motivation to build them and sell them as quickly as they can. Their profit from those comes from the last couple units. So they're motivated by, you know, the real estate market to build those as quickly as they can. But in case they can't, in case things do go wrong, that's where we put a penalty in, and we would deduct half a million dollars from their TIF payments if they fail to deliver those in the allotted time period. So the term sheet in front of you tonight, we included both a clean version that has all these edits incorporated into it, as well as a redline version that shows those specific changes.
Right.
But there definitely is a change from last week. But if, I guess I want to be clear that there's no intention to switch projects. The final project that was approved last December on a zoning perspective is still expected to be the project that's delivered.
Okay. I just, you know, going into the HRA meeting, I knew that that concern was not what we were there to discuss. It's more a city council issue with our regulatory authority to approve a project. And so I really, I mean, I know it's in here, but just to get a letter from a resident saying, why are the townhomes removed from the project, and then reading the term sheet and going, hm, I wonder why that happened? I don't like being in that position. So that just, I just wanted to bring that out. And I feel like, coming out of the HRA meeting, I knew there was intent to put something in here, something ironclad, if there is such a thing, that the townhomes would be built, and I'm confident that that is the case. I also want to clarify that what we're doing tonight is considering the term sheet. We're not considering a TIF district at this point. We are just considering the term sheet. So TIF is a challenging topic for people, and the process can be confusing, but we are not creating a TIF district tonight. We're just considering the terms.
That's exactly correct. And on the screen, I included some of the key steps that are mandated by Minnesota statute when it comes to the use of TIF. So earlier this night, on one of the consent agenda items.
So I'm not seeing what you're seeing then, because I see people.
Okay. Jennifer can work her magic. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Earlier tonight, one of the items on the agenda was to set a date for a future public hearing to discuss the use of TIF. I believe that date is March 19th. So we'll have a public hearing at that date. We'll get the notices out. That'll come in the next couple of days and weeks. But there certainly is more process to go through in creating a TIF. But with the terms, we're at the point now where the developer just needs to know if this kind of makes sense. You know, on the zoning side, we have a two-step process of granting preliminary approval, and then granting final. On the financing, TIF financing side, right tonight, we're kind of on that preliminary approval step. If we like what we see, if we think we can make it work, it'd be great to hear that. The developer will do their best to get the rest of these pieces in place and keep on schedule and keep things moving. If they don't like what we see, they can move on and do something different. So I think we're ready to hear an answer to know if they should keep moving or look elsewhere.
Sure. My last question is of the qualified costs. One of them is the improvement to 72nd Street. What are the plans for knowing what those improvements are?
Councilmember Brindle, we don't know yet, but the direction we gave the developers, let's make this an example of what a true living streets could be. So let's go to the max on narrowing lanes, providing just pedestrian experience, plantings, trees, and they're going to bring examples of that to us. And then we were going to share that with the neighborhood, because we want to get the neighborhood to buy in on those ideas. The other thing we'd potentially like to do this summer is test out some ideas at Cornelia and 72nd, and 72nd and Oaklawn, because we have some sidewalk connections there. From a city perspective, and then maybe if there's funding available in PACs, we could maybe potentially do some of those improvements in 2020 when this street's being built on the other end near France.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Member Anderson?
Thank you. Just to finish up on Member Brindle's comments, so we're very specifically planning on going west with improvement on 72nd. Or there is a study going on in order to determine that, just for clarity?
At this point, it's, they're required to build between France and Linmar.
Yes.
I'd like to just look at two more intersections this summer, just to see, do the tactical urbanism we've talked about of using barrels and paint and trying some stuff of narrowing an intersection and seeing how it works. Measure it, put cameras up, and test it out. But we wanted to get through this process first to make sure a project's going forward, test it, video it, work with the neighborhood to see what they like, and then potentially see if there's funding to install those two with city funds.
Yeah, because there has been interest in the neighborhood.
Yeah, correct.
About an extension there, and wondering, why is it limited at Linmar? And I think it's a good idea to study that and consider taking it west.
But it wouldn't be a full reconstruction, I'm not considering a full reconstruction of the street, just intersections at Cornelia and 72nd.
See.
And Oaklawn and 72nd.
Okay.
Because that's, if you go from Linmar, that's another three or four blocks, and we don't have funding to build that, and it's not in our queue for street reconstruction. We're just looking at pet improvements at those intersections.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of other questions.
Sure. Member Anderson?
Let's see, okay. This is the same question another day, on the second-floor plaza. Now, I thank you for addressing that, because what I notice is that the improvement was modified or restated, maybe changed. It's including public exterior stairs and an internal or external route that readily identifies, handicapped accessible is the language that I got out of it. So my question on Thursday was, is it ADA compliant? And when we look at a public benefit, is that space accessible readily to members of the public that want to use it? So does that include elderly? Does it include young children? Does it especially include people that fall under the Disabilities Act? And I need to be reassured that we're not, that we're specifically speaking about ADA compliance externally.
The developer and architect have committed to making sure that it is open and accessible to folks, to the general public. So when the final plans are submitted, you'll probably see some reworking, or we can make sure that the architect labels what that accessible route is to get up to that level. My recollection is that there's a set of exterior stairs and then an interior elevator. I think it's too late at this point to do like an exterior ramp or another dedicated external stairway or elevator, or something like that. But we can ask the architect to make sure that he clearly identifies what those routes are.
Yes, I noticed that he's not here this evening to ask that specifically.
There is a representative, there's an architect here.
Okay, good.
Sheldon, what do you like his? Sheldon, are you?
Yeah.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that.
Go ahead, introduce yourself, please.
Sheldon Berg with DGR Architecture, 333 Washington Avenue North in Minneapolis.
Thank you.
So, Councilmember Anderson, yes, we will be, and have always planned, to have accessibility to the upper plaza. There's obviously a stairway on the outside, and then there'll be an internal accommodation on the inside of the building via elevator. And other questions related to that?
Well, the elevation that I'm seeing here, it shows a stairway, but it doesn't look like that's something that would be readily negotiated.
Right. I mean, the stairway's obviously for a certain aspect of our constituents, I guess you could say. And then directions and clarity will be provided for the accessible route to the upper level, those that can't or wouldn't choose to use the stairs.
Would that be readily accessible from the owner if, in fact, somebody were to drive up and say, this is how I, I'd like to get to the plaza today?
Sure, they certainly would.
Okay, and I can't see it.
You probably can't, because it hasn't been a major element within the project, but that accommodation would certainly be there.
But you're assuring this evening that that will be readily available, easily accessed, very visible, and prepared for people to be able to gain access?
Correct, yes, yes.
It may be a legal requirement, and we'll see it in final.
It almost has to be.
Yeah, I would think so.
There is.
And we'll see that in final design, then, I would imagine.
Okay, all right. That's helpful, thank you. Under terms and conditions, I'm on page 10 and 11, there's a resale or a purchase provision in there at the end of 25 years, I believe. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct, on page 11.
It's a bit murky in that. We would be paying 100, we, the calculation is based on a buyer being able to qualify for a mortgage at 120% of AMI at that place and time. Who knows what that would be? 220,000, 200,000 at that time. And yet, we're solving for 60% AMI, so what we would be doing at that time is, after dedicating a fair amount of TIF funding, we'd be paying a price that, based on 120% of AMI. And then we would be trying to resolve that, our gap at that time, to move it to 60% AMI, and that's after funding. So we'd probably be seeking additional funding at that time. So that, it's a little murky, and I'm not certain that we want to be in the business of buying 62 affordable housing units at any time to own as a city. I think that, could you share anything, any light on that?
Sure, sure. So this provision was included basically to address the longstanding question that's been raised by this body of, what happens when the term is over?
Yes.
What happens in year 16 or year 26? This developer is willing to enter into a, or to give the city the first right of refusal to buy the units if they are sold. We use the same language as we did for previous projects, so that's where that came from. That was a 45th and France project. They have the same language in their contract. And the rationale is that for four-sale units, you're usually looking at a slightly higher price point, right? So in the past, the city or the HRA has gotten involved on a couple different levels. There have been some properties that the HRA purchased, put a restrictive covenant on, and resold them, because we didn't want to be in the long-term land ownership game. There are other properties that we never got involved with, some of the Centennial Lakes projects and Edinburgh projects, where the developer built them, we just had them put a restrictive covenant on the four-sale units, and they lasted through the term of that covenant, and then it was over. So there's different ways to extend that affordability. I'm standing before the group tonight, I'm not willing to predict what the right way is 25 years from now, but with the provisions that we've negotiated in this term sheet, we at least have the opportunity to try to get an extension. Maybe they never sell it. Maybe they own it for 50 years and we never have the opportunity. But if they do sell it, we want to at least have first dibs. Maybe at the future council says, yes, we want to jump on it. Maybe they say, no, the... Maybe they say, no, the different group has already met the, the need for affordability. We don't need it any longer. So it's, it's really just a placeholder in our, in a foot, in our, our foot in their door so that if there is an opportunity and a need, we at least have a legal reason to say, hey, we're going to work together.
And we have an additional placeholder at that point in time because we have the latitude of entering into a negotiation to extend the affordability of those units at year 25.
That, that's correct, yeah. The way that we wrote it was one year prior to the termination. So if, if the affordability ends at 25 years, at about the 24th year, we agree to sit down in, in good faith. This was a little bit more contentious conversation with the developer because certainly that does have an impact on their value of the property. They are not willing to sit today to say they will sit down and come up with this agreement, but they are definitely willing to sit down in good faith and have a conversation and discuss what is the best outcome. Is it status quo? Is it a change? So they're, they are willing to have that conversation. So again, no guarantee of any particular outcome, but it's another way that if we put our money into the project at some level, that we at least have additional flexibility in the future.
It, it just, it circles back to the gap. There's always a gap of some kind, whether it's on the part of the city at some future date or the developer today or how we solve it. Last thing, and I've been troubled by this since Thursday morning and you heard me talk about it, and I, I just need to ask and understand very, very specifically, we are, we're going to reimburse here 4.9 million in order to continue affordability beyond year 15. And I, I, I need to completely grasp what that entails. Are we, do we, are we going to establish that once the TIF district is established, if it's established? Once the increments accrue, then at what point do we award the developer those funds or do we wait until year 15 and then year 16? Should there be an application process? I'm very foggy on that and I want to be certain that we make a good deal on the part of the city and on the part of the people who are going to be living in that building.
Great question. Happy, happy to respond that and clear it up. So the recommendation is to issue a TIF note or a TIF pledge of $12 million.
Yes.
Fixed fee maximum amount. Maybe it turns out to be a little bit less than that, but won't, will not exceed 12 million. It is not 12 million today plus 4.9 million in 15 years. That'd be 16.9 and we're, that's not where we're going. So the TIF pledge would be a, a maximum amount of 12 million. The eligible expenses that help us justify that 12 million, why I can stand up here in good faith and say it's, it's a, it's a good deal and I believe the right thing for the community, is because as they were willing to extend the term of affordability, that came out of price. Basically, the city is implementing, I'll call rent control. You know, we're putting rental income restrictions on this property, not just for 15 years, but for 25 years. The cost to paint it and put new carpeting in and hire this cleaning staff and change the light bulbs and pay the electric bills, all that's the same. So basically, they will be losing money or not earning as much money as they normally would, not just for 15 years, but in an additional 10 years. So the, the 4.9 million is the estimated lost revenue over a 10-year period. The, and tonight I'm blanking on the, on the estimates, but a, a one-bedroom apartment can be leased for about $1,000 or $1,100 and at a, at the affordable rate. A two-bedroom currently can be leased for about $1,200 or just under $1,300. The market rate for those units are close to double that amount. So I mean, that's a lot of revenue that the developer is foregoing. If you look at the, the revenue stream and then do a present value calculation, that's how we got to the 4.9 million. But as far as what the city would pledge to the, to the developer, it's a maximum of 12 million and that's paid out over the life of the TIF district until we satisfy that, that commitment. At year 15, we do not hike it up again and give them a, a second chance. That $12 million will get the project through that 25-year term.
So it's a neutral event to the developer, whether they receive 4.9 million and we don't go beyond 15, then, then it could be less than 12, then it could be seven, close, close to seven, if it was 15 as opposed to the 25. And I do understand that's a condition of, of granting TIF. But I, what I, what I wonder about is if we have the ability and, and the, the right actually, to negotiate at year 25 for extension of affordability, is there any reason that we couldn't negotiate with the developer, since that becomes a neutral event to him, to negotiate at year 14 for an extension beyond that? And in the meantime, and I believe in miracles too, so in the meantime, if we had 5 million and, and your response could be, well, yeah, but it doesn't exist without the, but it does exist across the street. And we do have that potentially in the Southdale II district and under pooling that potentially could be used, the $5 million mystical figure, imaginary figure that we have to dedicate to affordable housing. In my experience, $5 million accomplishes 85 or 90% of the construction cost of 40 or even 45 affordable housing units without the site acquisition. And then we make a move towards durability and permanence and we don't kick the can down the road in the way that we are doing. And, and I, I, that's the, I'm troubled by that, that is this, at 5 million dollars, is this the best use and are we doing the most to create durable, affordable housing that's in the best interest of the community and the people who will live in it? That's a, I'm having a hard time getting beyond that.
I can help you by sharing some of my thoughts on that.
Yes, thank you.
So we had mentioned the gap is 23 to 24 million dollars today or actually 2020, right? 2020 construction dollars, we're at a 23 to 24 million dollar gap. The TIF note at 12 gets us halfway there and then the developers got to dig deeper and do some other things as well, grants, et cetera. We already covered that. The fact that the affordable units are affordable for longer is something that we frankly included as part of our negotiation. And we heard from this body and from other advocates throughout the city that, that longer-term affordability is, is very desirable. We considered a number of different types of TIF, TIF districts on this site. We considered initially a 15-year, a 26-year, a 20-year. The way that we could maximize the length and still meet the developer's debt requirements was that special housing district at 20 years. And frankly, just as we negotiated it, I felt that based on the comments of, and preferences by this group, that 15 years would not be adequate. So the developer was, you know, I'm sure he would love to stick at 15 years. We talked about that for a long time in our, in our negotiations, but he, the developer heard this body as well and the request for longer term. So they, I mean, they dug deeper in their project to make it work. It doesn't solve the problem permanently, but again, it's also hard to predict a prob, what a problem will be like in 25 years.
If we solve the problem today by creating permanence and affordable housing, we have far less to concern ourselves with in 15 years beyond the negotiation with the developer. And I, I, that's, it's bothering me quite a bit that we spend $5 million in affordable housing, but it's in the future some way, somehow, we're going to, we're going to try again to continue to extend affordability in this project or in other similar projects where we have the same kind of thing. And I, I, I don't understand what you're saying and I, I hope that you understand what I'm saying as well.
I, I do.
Because they run concurrently.
Correct.
You know, it's, it's, can we find a way to extend and still find a way to create durability in affordable housing? The permanence of affordable housing is what people are concerned with and what we get concerned with financially because I just believe that our public funding is a precious asset and should be safeguarded and, and evaluated very, very carefully. And if there are some other solutions, not necessarily better, but different, that at least creates durability, I'm, I'm a huge proponent of that. And I, I'm, and going forward, this is just a good example here tonight, but going forward, it's not only an example, but it's an opportunity as well. So, thank you.
Member Fisher.
So Bill, can you, like if we get down the road and decide that we're going to make improvements along Seventy Second or at least the, the intersections that Chad was referring to, can you take any of the increment from this district? And we're, right now, we're, in this term sheet, we're suggesting that we're pledging 12 million toward this specific list, but if, say there was a need for 2 million for street improvements that are well outside this project area, is that an acceptable thing that can happen?
I'll give my initial answer, but I might look to Mr. Lindgren for the full legal answer on that one. So I, I've, I might sound like a broken record, but with the TIF law, there's only so many ways you can use the money, right? The, the money that's generated in that district. There's generally some latitude about pooling some of the money outside the district to meet certain goals, but then sometimes you get the smell test. You know, if you go just outside the boundaries, like Seventy Second Street, that's directly related, but how far down do you go? And that's where sometimes you can run into difficulties. So working with city engineer Milner, that's where I looked at possibly the PACs fund to improve, to make some of those minor improvements that might be considered. But the, the pledge of TIF support on this project, as Mr. Arzold from Ellers mentioned, is based on 90% of the increment that's collected. So that means there was 10% that theoretically could be used for some off-site improvement that's related to the project and in the city's eyes passes that legal test. So that's a long way of saying maybe.
Okay.
And if we want a legal answer, I might look to Mr. Lindgren on that one.
Mayor, council members, for the record, Jay Lindgren, Dorsey and Whitney. We also have to remember we're creating a housing TIF district here and so there are additional pooling restrictions that would apply. And so I have to actually think that although I'm happy to usually say yes or no, I think the answer right now has to be maybe because I think we have to look at what else is included with those street, street improvements to make sure it fulfills the purposes of a housing district. I don't think that we should count on significant tax increment revenues maybe being available for street improvements.
Okay.
My, my, I hadn't thought about it before this evening and I think that's probably the right answer.
Okay. Bill, one of the other, I'm, I'm maybe blending too much from the presentation you made at the HRA and then tonight. I don't think I heard you talk tonight about the city expenses, you know, for your time and for, you know, our consultant team's time. That's all being covered with the, you know, it's not the general fund that's paying for this that's covered within, from the developer's side on this, correct?
That's exactly correct. The city of Adana is pretty risk averse when it comes to those types of expenses. So early on in the process, we asked, or the developer agreed to abide by our City of Adana TIF policy, which requires that some of my time and then any of our third-party consultant time is paid for by the developer. Now, the, the advisors, Dorsey and Whitney and Ellers, et cetera, they clearly work for the city. They serve our best interest, but their invoices are passed along and paid by the developer. So if the project falls apart, the cities, I spent a couple hours, but the cities expended no money and lost nothing on that project. The developer has been very good to work with in, in that regard. They recognize that, you know, their job, so to speak, is to bear that risk and develop the site, whereas the city, you know, we might be a partner based on, on your vote, but we don't want to be a partner in the risk, in the risk, we want to be a partner in the reward.
Okay. Just, we've gotten a few emails in the last several days about the concern about the town homes and a couple of the emails talk about that we're, we're not building town homes and we're going to have surface parking outside. And I think maybe there was sort of some confusion about the, and I think I figured it out tonight, I just want to verify, that the 30 parking spaces that we call surface parking, they're not out, you know, on a town home pad where they're supposed to be town homes. They've always been inside this building at a surface level. And, and when it reads that way in the term sheet, I just want to make sure that you verify that there's no additional surface parking that's happened since we approved this project.
You're exactly correct. So in hindsight, we had, we made a poor choice of words in our term sheet. The, the, what we called surface parking, it's level one parking, it's on the surface level, but it's still inside the building. So you have to drive into the, into each building, the 7200 or the 7250. The exterior of the building is, you know, the commercial storefront, there's town homes, there's some entrances, but the inner core is interior covered parking. So in our term sheet, we call that surface, which may have created confusion amongst some folks. There is not a giant surface parking lot on this project. There is not a small surface parking lot on this project. In hindsight, we probably should have called that level one parking rather than surface. But I just want to be really clear that the project that, that is in the packet, it's the same project that was approved last December. There's no changes to it. So the, the, the fact that the town homes will be built by a different builder, that's material to the financial interest, but from a community perspective, you know, we heard the town homes are very important, but the same town homes that are shown here are what's intended to be constructed.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, rightfully so, neighbors were concerned when they were thinking about imagining, you know, surface parking. They're concerned when they hear that the town homes, you know, aren't going to be built. I think what was clear, Mr. De Volus was at the HRA meeting and he explained pretty clearly that it's more about phasing and, and it may be, you know, different developer delivering the town homes, different product from the rental, but it made sense, at least what I heard him say, is that, you know, you, you, you don't build the, the ownership piece of the site and then try to sell those while you've got construction going on. So it seemed to me there was some logic in building the rental components, the large building component, and then the last piece would be the town homes. I think we do need to, you know, have that assurance that they'll be built. The one thing, my understanding, and Sheldon, I'd like you to correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that when we think of, we, another term that has been used is a pad. I don't see it as a pad. If, if I'm understanding right, those town homes are pretty unique in that they're connected underground through the parking to the large parking, the underground parking under the, the larger building. And then there's this little connection and then there's underground parking under the town homes. My understanding is that's actually being built as phase one. So you don't really have a pad, you have a cap over a foundation in which, and, and this, I think this is an important distinction because when I think about, oh my gosh, three years from now, you're going to come along and build some town homes, once everything's been nicely done, now we're going to have backhoes and, but you really wouldn't. You actually, if, again, if I understood correctly, you would be building a stick frame building over a foundation that's already been built. There's not, you know, the, the excavating and all that kind of stuff, which is actually a pretty clean way to build out 10 homes over, you know, hopefully a very short period of time. But I just want that clarified so everyone can hear and, and we, we have some understanding of what that might be.
Councilmember Fisher, that's exactly right. The, the parking that's associated with the town homes would be completed in the phase along with the, the apartments. So what would be left at the end of, you know, let's just say the apartment construction and, and just prior to the town homes being constructed would be, the underground garage would already be there for the, for the townhouses, for the for-sale townhouses. And it really is just a question of, or a consideration for phasing, where you don't want to have for-sale units and trying to get access to those when we've constructed this way to be most applicable to getting the rental housing and the, and the retail built out first and then coming at the end after all that sort of mess and noise is done and building some very sort of discreet townhouse buildings.
building some very sort of discreet townhouse buildings.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last piece is just, and I'll be a little repetitive from the HRA meeting, but, you know, this concern, as we look at the very specific items that we're saying are part of the $12 million TIF, what I look at is the larger $22, $23 million gap and the fact that, or maybe the gap was a little bigger, the $24 million gap, the $22 million was the eligible TIF expenses from the state statute perspective, and we're going well below that. And when I look at that, I have less concern about what the specific eligible expenses are, knowing that there's a lot of eligible expenses that we're just not even choosing to consider. And the reason I look at it that way is, I look at the whole picture here. And why, you know, why would we, we wouldn't do this if it wasn't good for the overall taxpayer, all of the taxpayers in the city. And so, what are we getting out of this? It's, I don't think the focus should be on, you know, are any of us going to go up and use this upper-level plaza? It should be on what did we get here that made this development better for all of us? And when I think back to the, I don't know, four development projects that came, proposals that came before this, they were all bigger, more dense, went to the lot lines. They were just big chunks of building, which didn't seem very appealing to any of us in the neighborhood. Now, not everyone's happy with this project still, but I think there's a lot more that could agree that this project is as good as we had and that what we really did is we, I remember taking floors off this building, right? We took it and we made it shorter and we made it take up less of the site. We've dedicated, you know, quite a high percentage to conserving the trees and the open space. Councilmember Staunton said, hey, why not put a pedestrian-oriented street through your property? And they did it. So, there were a lot of things that happened that I think are what I would call the public good, that it's good for the neighborhood, it's good for the community, and it all is happening on private property. And let's not forget that we're solving the neighbor's stormwater problems on this site. So, when you take all those things and add them all up, that's what creates the gap. And the TIF is only helping to solve, you know, maybe half of that gap. And so, that's why I, and we talked about this after the HRA meeting, and I think I get less concerned about the nuance of that, though I do, I think, the fact that we are choosing those elements, I think you're right, that, you know what, it should be accessible. You know, we have to, we have to ask all those questions and assure those things. The harder one is the affordable housing, and you really, man, even more so than the HRA meeting, I think when you came at it the second time, it even made more sense to me what you're, right? You've really perfected, I think, what you were trying to get at, and I think it's a fair question. But I think, but I think to not do the affordable housing, we'd really have to unwind it and say, you know what, forget the affordable housing, just build your project here, and for the dollar, we can, we can solve this better across the street or somewhere else. I happen to, I just feel like it's good to incorporate affordable housing, get as much extension out of it as possible. And the way I can wrap my brain around it, because I think you make a compelling argument, the way I can wrap my brain around it is that we've created, we've helped create a significant gap here to get what we all want to get as close as we can get on the site, and I feel okay with that. So, I guess those are all my comments on it. Thanks.
Good. Thanks. And I thought that one slide of yours was quite interesting, where on this five-and-a-half-acre parcel of private property, we now have 45% of that property that involves public easement and public access, public use. So, I think that's some impressive work on the negotiating side of things. I got a couple of questions.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I thought maybe you had earlier, but you have some more?
No, no, I'll.
Okay. All right. Okay, wait. Yeah, I think he's got some comments, but no questions. Maybe you want. So, in looking, and thank you for that red line version. It was easier to track things. Down in paragraph six, you dealt with the townhouses and the schedule on which townhouses would be constructed. And you may have commented on this in your presentation. We know that at the end, if they're, if they haven't built the 10 townhouses by August 31st of 2027, they're subject to a $500,000 fine that's handled in a subsequent paragraph of the revised agreement, revised term sheet. But earlier in the, you know, in the cycle of building those townhouses, it requires the commencement of one or more townhouses by 12/31/23, 2023. But I don't see any penalty in there if they haven't commenced one or more townhouses for construction purposes by 12/31/2023. And I think you may have mentioned that that was tied to the TIF note, that we're not going to institute the TIF note if you're not at least started on construction of some of these things.
That's exactly correct. And we didn't define it as a penalty in the term sheet, but that's exactly what it is. Theoretically, if they build the two apartment buildings and do the easements and all those things, but haven't put a shovel on the ground for the first town home, they don't get a TIF note, they don't get a penny. And if they sit on their hands for three years and do nothing with the town homes, they don't get a TIF note, they don't get a penny. So, they're motivated to get the town home started. That would start their potential cash flow to get repaid. So, I think that's a very big motivator. We didn't really have to frame it as a penalty, but that's how the whole thing's been restructured. And then the final penalty would be if, and we did structure it as a penalty, is if they don't finish on time, then we would deduct half a million from their total payment.
All right. Good. For, I'm going to bring Mr. Lindgren up on this next question, and you may have a comment too, Mr. Newendorf. So, we've talked about the fact that there's a gap of $22, $23 million that the TIF note would ostensibly fill about $12 million of it. So, there's still a gap that the developer has to deal with, and it's a gap that I think our advisors and you think is manageable, and we're going to enter into a, at least you're asking us to consider tonight approving you going forward to enter into a final development agreement or a full development agreement. Would dealing with the gap that falls to the developer be part of that full development agreement? Would that issue be resolved in the development agreement?
Mayor and council members, the answer is yes. I mean, we typically utilize a procedure in a redevelopment agreement of what we call a go-ahead letter. And that's the point at which the developer says, okay, everything is put together. We have our financing. We have our equity. All the terms are ready to go. In other words, to answer your question directly, we would deal with it by, the developer would have to make up the gap presumably through a form of additional owner's equity. And I think what that means is that the owner has to be sort of patient on their return that they can get out of the equity they put in. But again, to your specific question, now, the redevelopment agreement would address that, because before anything commences, there has to be a complete financing plan and direction given, or, you know, a statement, a covenant stated from the, from the developer that all the money is in place, whether that's the, so not just the TIF note, but the equity and the borrowed money and so forth. So, it would be addressed.
Sure. So, I think that's something that we've probably all been concerned about since the HRE meeting, and we appreciate all of you working on it from our team's standpoint. I'm going to bring Mr. Margulies up here from the standpoint of the developer, representing the developer, and get your affirmation or confirmation that this gap that falls to the developer with respect to, let's say, $10 or $12 million is going to be dealt with in a, in a development agreement.
Mr. Mayor, Michael Margulies, 2007, West Franklin, Minneapolis. You're correct. The portion of the gap that is not covered by the TIF has to be handled through the equity that's been produced by the developer. And if you look at the project timeline in Section Five, the developer is constrained by those timelines to put the equity in place by those dates and to start the project by those dates. And the TIF note doesn't exist and doesn't arise unless and until those dates are met. So, it's up to the developer to satisfy the conditions that are put in the redevelopment agreement. And it's going to be up to the developer to find a way to, to generate a sufficient return or sufficient delay in the return to make sure the project goes forward.
Good. Thank you.
And finally, the last point on that is, it is the understanding of what the TIF number is that helps us, puts one of the final pieces in place that lets us talk with the rest of the equity in this project, so that they know sort of what the financial roadmap is. Until we know what this number is, it's a variable that sort of leaves us incomplete.
All right. Good. Thank you. And then the last question I had dealt with, I think the very interesting ongoing concern that Councilmember Anderson has had with regard to the use of this 4.9 million with respect to affordable housing, and I wanted to bring Stephanie Hawkinson up here, our Affordable Housing Director, to talk a little bit about it and how you're looking at this potential subsidy. I think Councilmember Anderson thinks, at least this is my interpretation, what he was thinking about, is that we're buying an extra 10 years of affordability for 4.9 million. At least that was kind of what I was thinking we were potentially doing. But I think you've got a different way of looking at it, and that is that we're buying 25 years of affordability for 4.9 million. I wonder if you could explain your analysis and explain whether or not you think this is an appropriate use of these funds for 25 years to gain 62 units of affordable housing in Edina?
Mayor, council members, the short answer is yes, I do. In part, because it is 62 units of affordable housing for full 25 years, not just the 10 years. It is the full 25 years. If this project were a standalone 62-unit affordable housing building, they would have access to different sources of financing to finance the gap for affordability. And the gap would be greater than $4.6 million. They do not have access to low-income housing tax credits because it's incorporated within a market-rate building. They do not have access to all the other traditional sources of financing that allows for the affordability of housing. The source they have is the TIF, so it's really buying the affordability for the full 25 years.
All right. And by my calculations, that ends up being a subsidy of about $3,162 per unit per year for that 25-year period. And I take it you went through that whole analysis in determining that, yes, this is something that you support as our Affordable Housing Director?
Mayor, council members, indeed. Later this evening or early morning, depending on the timing, you're going to be going through a sketch plan review on a project that is standalone for 62 units. And with the amount of money that the debt, that the rents leverage for the debt and the remaining is far greater than 4.6.
All right. Okay. Good. I guess I misspoke at 4.9, but 4.6. So, all right, that's very helpful. That answers my three questions. So, thank you.
I have one more.
Yeah. Member Staunton.
On page eight of the red line version, there's a chart that includes the description of qualified costs and includes at number eight, Level P1 Structured Parking for $6.7 million. Is that all of the structured parking or just the public portion of the structured parking?
You stumped me. Let me look to my team.
Well, it's also, that's a statute.
Right.
But it's just.
Was it one level or both? Was it all of it?
Well, there's, it says P1, so there's just.
That should have been just the P1 level.
Right. That's what it says.
Right.
And that's the stuff that's publicly accessible. So, there's more structured parking than that, is my point.
Correct. There's two levels of parking, but one of it is private for the residents.
Right. And one of it is public. Okay. Thank you. I mean, Mr. Mayor, if, I don't know.
Member Staunton, go ahead and make your comments.
On this issue of kind of what's in it for us, what kind of bang are we getting for our buck, which I think is kind of what we're talking about in a variety of different ways, I've been just kind of thinking through this. Let's say we didn't give any money for the affordable housing. We did 25 years, and none of the TIF money goes to the affordable housing. I can still find $12 million worth of stuff that's beneficial to the city. If you take the Woonorf and Seventy Second Street together, it's about $2.4 million. The public structured parking is $6.7 million. The stormwater is $1.8 million. That together is $10.9 million. That's before you even start to talk about the amount of property that's dedicated. I just did some quick math off the Hennepin County website. The property is currently assessed at $10.95 million. It's around $48.5 a square foot. Even if you take off the second-level plaza, you've got about 92,000 square feet, which is about 41% of the site. You know, times that 48.5 bucks is almost $4.5 million. Now, granted, we're not getting that as fee interest. We're getting easement, and there's some shared, but the $25,000 for the forest is so that nothing can be done with it. So, there's no use for it by the property owner. So, I think you get quite easily from $10.9 million to $12 million, even before you start talking about the amount for the affordable housing. And so, if this were, you know, a $12 million gap and all of it was affordable housing or the $5 million of it was affordable housing, I think we might want to be thinking about that. But I feel like on this project, all the things that we've asked this project to do that it's done have cost money. It's been, it's shorter than what previous iterations were. Let me just make sure I get the, you've got dedicated public realm, development of that public realm, and maintenance of that public realm. So, we're not even responsible for maintaining that public realm. Got underground parking. We've got affordable housing. We've got stormwater management. We've got Seventy Second Street. I think when you add all that up, we easily get to the $12 million. And, you know, they've got a big gap to fill still between there and the $23 or $24 million. So, I think we clearly get a lot for what we're getting in return, and that $12 million is a reasonable figure. And when you put that with the other things I talked about on Thursday, you know, you start from the proposition that, you know, if we didn't do TIF and somehow this project happened, which I don't think there's any way this project could happen without TIF. I think we've demonstrated that with $24 or $25 million gap. But let's say it somehow happened. It doesn't give us extra money. It gives us extra tax capacity. So, it's not like we can take that money and spend it on Fred Richards or take that money and spend it on other affordable housing. The risk, we have virtually no risk. It's pay-as-you-go. The developer's running all the money. If the increment doesn't show up, they're the ones on the short end of the stick, not us. It doesn't increase the amount of property we've got in our, the amount of property tax capacity that we have in TIF districts beyond 4%, which is still half of what a lot of our neighbors are doing. And by 2021, when South Dale Two comes off of this, we're going to be even lower than that. And then I've talked about what's in it for us. So, I'm supportive of this, and I'll let my other colleagues weigh in.
Good comments. Member Fisher, thoughts? Member Brendan? Member Anderson? Good. All right. Yeah, I, well, I just want to tell you, Member Staunton, I appreciate the way you've done your analysis. I had my notes still from Thursday morning's HRA discussion, and your three keys for TIF I wrote down. You know, but for the use of TIF, we wouldn't have this $111 million project on that site. It's no rest to the city. It's a pay-go note. And then you discussed adequately, I think, well, very well, the what's in it for us sort of aspect of it. And we're delivering the best project for the site regardless of the ROI, and the cost of the TIF district will be borne by the developer, and the TIF doesn't kick in until the project's delivered. So, I think there are so many good elements to this. And hopeful that the conversation on affordable housing was helpful as well and hearing from our affordable housing manager, but certainly a legitimate concern about how we get the best bang for our buck over the longest period of time is a good one.
And frankly, my concern is only about moving in a direction of permanence, moving in a direction of not--
And dealing with this problem time after time. That's all.
Good. So I'm going to support this project as well. We did also support it when we were sitting as commissioners on the HRA. Entertain a motion to approve the term sheet and authorize the staff to engage legal and financial professionals on behalf of the city to prepare a full redevelopment agreement based upon the approved term sheet. Is there a motion of that effect? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your very, very helpful input. This is a terrific project for our community. All right. Now we've got Mr. Noondorf back up again with proposed amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Pentagon Village.
Yes, thank you. This is a fairly straightforward and simple amendment. Earlier this evening, you heard and approved the changes in the site plan for the Pentagon Village project. This is the 12-acre site on the south side of 77th Street. Back in October, the city and HRA did enter into a TIF redevelopment agreement with the developer, Mr. Scott at Solomon Real Estate, and Mr. Tankenoff at Hillcrest. And in order to make sure that the amended site plan matches up with the TIF agreement, there is an amendment in front of you this afternoon, this evening. The same amendment was reviewed and discussed by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority a few weeks ago. It was approved by that board contingent upon the zoning approvals going forward. And in summary, the amendment covers four basic items. It revises the timing and the scope of that parking element, changes the timing and scope of the phase, what's included in Phase 1 versus Phase 2. We also added a couple other protections to ensure that the perimeter landscaping and sidewalks are installed, even if there's a delay in building some of those elements, like the hotel or the future office building. And there's also a rewrite of the parking easement to make sure that it's compatible with one large structure built in multiple phases rather than two smaller structures. So it's a fairly simple amendment. The team is with me this evening. Jay Lindgren from Dorsey &amp; Whitney, and Nick and Jason from Ellers help us prepare the amendment. We're all available for any questions, but we'd recommend that the amendment be approved.
Sure. So we approve this on, I think, January 31st as the HRA. Is there, are there any questions that have arisen in the councilmember's minds since then? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve Amendment Number One to the October 2018 redevelopment agreement with Pentagon Village LLC. Someone?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. And the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Carried. All right. Sketch Plan Review. Our agenda was estimating we'd be at this juncture at 9:35. So we've had some really great discussions. So we are going to get an introduction on this matter by, Director Teague, are you going to introduce it, and then we're going to go to Mr. Worthington?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor members of the council. Before you, is a sketch plan review. This is the property that's owned by the Housing Foundation. They went out for an RFP, and MWF Properties were selected to be the developer of the site. Peter Worthington is here from MWF, and will present the project. But I will say that this project, in terms of the density that's proposed and height, is consistent with the small-area plan that was recently adopted. MWF has revised their plans to be in conformance with that plan. But with that, I'll turn it over to Peter to introduce the project.
Okay. Before we do that, do you have any other overarching observations from the Planning Commission on their sketch plan review?
Yeah, some of the items that they discussed and talked about was which side should the parking lot be on, either the east side or the west side. I don't think we really had a consensus on that. We talked about trail connections, trail connections to the regional trail that's to the east. The small-area plan talks about that connection coming in on the south end of this property. Could be done a couple of ways. Could be a direct access from this site. It could be shared easement from both sites, you know, some taken from the property that we're looking at, and then a portion of the property to the south. There's some slopes in that southern area that the easiest way to actually connect to the park is from the lot to the south. Those are probably the two main points that the Planning Commission discussed.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Director Teague. Mr. Worthington, welcome. Would you give us your full name and business address before you start your remarks?
Certainly. Peter Worthington with MWF Properties, 7645 Lindell Avenue, South Minneapolis.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. I know it's late, so I'll try to be brief. Just wanted to say a couple of words about us, then I'll get to the heart of the matter. MWF Properties has been working at developing affordable housing since 1999. It's all we do is affordable workforce housing. We've got about 1,300 units already developed, with about 600 in some form of development right now. We're long-term owners. We've never sold a property. We have in-house property management. We believe in building long-term relationships. Which one's a clicker, Carrie? There we go. The project we're talking about here is named Amundson Flats. It's 62 units, 100% affordable, at the average house sold is 60% of the AMI. It's a family-focused. It's a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, about half of which are three-bedroom units. We believe in trying to put as many amenities in the properties as we can, such as in-unit laundries. We have onsite management. We have fitness center, community room, and we have, we don't charge for underground parking, so we encourage the use of that. So that's a little bit about us. And I'd like to talk about the project. Could you turn on the overhead? How do I get that on the screen?
How do you use that city seal as your bull's record sign?
Got it.
There you go.
Great. Thank you.
Perfect positioning.
Sorry about the crease. So, it's about a 1.25-acre site. We responded to an RFP from the foundation last year. Initially, we proposed a 72-unit project that was based upon what we thought was the maximum number of units we could fit on the site and still achieve what we think is a reasonable parking ratio of 1.5 stalls per unit, which is underparked per typical Edina code, but we think it's adequate, and we can demonstrate that. However, when the small-area plan was formally approved, without the potential for a density bonus for affordable, we revised the planning to be 62 units, which is the max at 50 units per acre. Some challenges for this site. It's a very narrow site, 120 feet wide. And when you factor in some parking and a 64-foot-wide building, there's not a whole lot of land left over. We've got some significant slopes from 70th Street down to the south end of the site. In order to put covered parking, where you have no room for long driveway ramps down or up, we have to start the building pretty much at grade at the south end of the site, which kind of limits where we're going to be at the north end of the site. One of the things that we have been talking about is, when we revised the project from 72 to 62 units, we kept the same 103 stalls. We're comfortable in saying that we can reduce the number of parking stalls here by 10. That still gets us at 1.5 stalls per unit. And our thought there was that we would eliminate this row of stalls along here, which would allow us to shift this line of parking north, which would then create a spot for a trail connection. That eliminates five of the 10 stalls. The other five, we're thinking we eliminate up here, which would allow us to expand this green space to create additional gathering area for our residents. One of the issues we're dealing with is IBC, our building code requirement, that you be a certain minimum distance from the property line. Otherwise, you'll have limitations on the size of openings you can have in the building. So that's one reason why we put the parking on this side. The other, another reason was that by, we thought that the intent was to create a urban streetscape and having the building towards the street, recognizing, of course, that the existing buildings across the street have the parking in the front, but we thought that the goal was to get away from that. Also, by having the space for the drive lane and surface parking on the trail side of the site, allowed whatever green space we can create for our residents to be connected to the trail side. If you flip the building, that green space flips to the street side, which creates kind of a disconnect to the trail. Those are just some of the planning challenges we're dealing with. This is a four stories of apartments over parking, which is within the guidelines of the new Small Area Plan. And with that, I'd like to listen to your comments and questions and suggestions.
Do you want to show some of the existing elevations that were in our--
Here's a--
--so that we can understand a little bit better what you're thinking about there?
Yeah. Be glad to. This is, this is an elevation taken from Amundson of what the building might look like. And-- Excuse me. Here. This is the same perspective, but at a broader scale, so that you could see the building in relation to 70th Street, and then to the property just to the south of us. Gives you some idea of the grade change from the south side, the south end of the site to 70th Street.
And what about materials?
If you look at this elevation, which is, shows you the east elevation, I'm sorry, this is still the west elevation. We've got a number of materials. We have cultured stone. We have some cement fiberboard panels. We have a variety of different widths of cement fiberboard lap siding. And the garage level would be a combination of a couple different types of rock-based block.
Okay.
It's a flat-roofed building, as you can see.
All right. Nice. See, you've got some movement in and out, so it's not a single plane.
That's correct.
Which is an important thing. And I don't see any ability to get outside. Is there, are there proposed to be balconies or no balconies? What's the--
We have not proposed balconies. We typically do not do balconies. A number of reasons. It adds some costs, creates some relatively uncontrolled openings in the exterior wall. And over time, people use balconies in different ways, and sometimes the aesthetics of that detract from the overall community. So our preference is to not have balconies.
Have you thought about the mix of units at all?
Yes.
Based on your experience?
We have. And right now-- Find that sheet of paper. I have lost that sheet of paper. Bear with me. Oh, there it is. Sorry. We have 50% three bedrooms, 37% two bedrooms, and 13% one bedrooms. So that's the percentage.
Okay. And those percentages are based upon your experience with some of your other properties as to what you think would be appropriate?
Yes. We, we're, we're going to apply for 9% tax credits, which, as you know, is a competitive allocation process. There are a number of scored criteria. And in one of the scored criteria, there's a mixed balance. So we're trying to achieve that, which is at least 75% twos and threes, and at least 25% threes. So that's sort of a starting point. But in this case, we decided to have a little bit more larger units than we might typically do. Typically, we might do 25% ones, 50% twos, 25% threes. Here, we're going heavier on the twos and threes to create larger units for families. We just think that'll be a better mix for this site.
Okay. Questions from councilmembers, or comments about the proposal? Member Fisher?
You know, overall, I think it's a, it's a nice-looking building. I think you've addressed some of my concerns on a site plan level. Just, I think, as you move forward and look at this, that connectivity to the trail--
Yes.
More green space for residents, that feels like, the more you can get the green space on your site to blend in with the trail, I think it's going to feel like they have a vast amount of recreation area, which I think will be good. It's going to be really important, and I'm glad to hear you're looking, you're thinking about ways to connect that trail through the greater, the Cahill Little Business District. I think that'll be beneficial for the district. So those are all positives. One of the concerns from the first time I looked at this is, is the, I mean, it's doing what it's supposed to do as a housing project, as a building that people are going to live in. I think where my concern lies is how it doesn't create life on the street necessarily. So, you know, what's happening in the building would be great, but, you know, you've got windows on the street, but in particular the way the grade falls off, you know, you've got a lot of wall there.
Yes.
And so it's a difficult sort of transition. I agree that fronting it on the street is the right answer. You know, I wouldn't put parking on this side or anything like that. But what I'd like to see is, is there a way to, you know, if, just if you're looking at that top elevation right there, from the entrance to the, to the south, you know, those might be units that you could have, say, a stoop and steps coming down. So all of a sudden, you have, it's almost like townhouse feeling on the street.
Yeah.
Though they wouldn't have to be townhouses necessarily. Is that something that you could look at as in the development of the project?
Sure. We can look at that. We have done that in a couple of other locations. I think the challenge is going to be, there's not, there's not much space from the face of that wall to the street. And, excuse me, my voice is giving out. And so to create steps up to it, and you can see it's a pretty significant step up, because here we're essentially at grade 11 feet below the first floor. So to have enough room for individual steps up to a front entry is going to be a challenge. One thought was, maybe it's steps up to a common walkway, an exterior corridor, but that's, doesn't quite get the sense of privacy that maybe you're looking for. So yes, we're going to study that, but we think it's going to be a challenge.
You know, just as you're, I mean, you make a good point. And, and maybe even if it's, it might not be all of them on that side. Maybe it's even some that are--
Mm-hmm.
You know, on the, I'm just, you know, in a normal situation, like, looking at this small-area plan, in an ideal world, you would have a commercial first floor--
Sure.
--and a residential above. It's not always that simple to do, especially when you're trying to create an affordable housing project. I just think, you know, if, minus the commercial, then we have to figure out a way to activate that street level, so it feels like there's life and action and activity. As you were talking about the challenge with that height, one project you might want to look at is on Main Street and Hopkins. Relatively new housing on Main Street. And they, what they had, they had the same problem, that the site was too narrow. They couldn't have the traditional steps down. So they just turned them perpendicular. So they have a little stoop, and then the steps come down, you know, parallel to the sidewalk. And, you know, I think they pulled it off fairly well. So you might just look at some examples like that.
Sure. Glad to.
Thank you.
One other point I wanted to make, I forgot to mention. A lot of discussion earlier this evening was about the duration of the affordability. Our proposal was for 40 years at the affordability. So we have a long-term commitment to making this an affordable housing project.
All right. Good. Member Anderson?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. And I noticed, I watched the Planning Commission meeting the other night. And what you did, I think, is the parking, the parking spaces on the south, you moved in. Accurate? I'm looking at the site plan.
So the suggestion is to eliminate these stalls--
Yeah.
--and then slide these forward. Correct.
And, and you do that for access to the regional trail?
To create a spot for, to get to the trail. Correct.
Yes. And now, there was a discussion of an elevation issue, and the drop-down to the regional trail, if it were accessed along there.
Yes, there is about a, I think it's about a seven-foot drop from the edge of this site to the base of the slope there.
Uh-huh. How do we, what can be done about that?
Well, I mean, this, this, of course, is not on the, on the property. It, it's property that belongs to this landowner. So I think the question will be, how do you design a bike trail? What are the proper slopes? What are the turning radiuses, radii? And it-- And it likely, it could be that if we, and again, we haven't studied this, engineered this at all, but one approach might be, if we slide this forward and put some retention along the edge of the parking, the trail might, the bike trail might start off at a lower elevation, and by the time it gets to the property line, it's at the proper elevation.
Well, there's a solution there somewhere.
There's a solution there, yeah.
And I mentioned that, because the regional trail is a primary attraction here in the development of the whole village feel of it. And it's kind of anticipated that that'll create more traffic through there, and create some more commercial traffic for the node as that becomes developed. And on that same note, I would just mention, yours will be the first project, I think, in there, and it's a good one. And it's a good use for that site, and the elevations are right. If the parking stays towards the rear of the building, it, you understand, I'm certain, you lose the potential of extended green space that kind of moves towards the city-owned space there, just on the other side of the trail.
Yes.
Which, I guess, would be a nice aesthetic. It would keep the parking off the street, however, and so, there's some sense to that.
There's some pros and cons, right?
Yeah. The architectural elements that, that will face Amundsen, I think that will prove to be important. You know, historical architectural elements, and I know that you have cost constraints. That's, I get that. Still, I, the village feel that's being created there, because I think that this node, when it's developed, will be a pretty special place, and it'll be, it'll be special for the people living in this building, because the walkability here and the access to amenities directly will be, that's, it'll be a drawing point. And so, to, it, earlier, we discussed potential affordable housing options, and, you know, one of the, one of the ideas going forward is that it's, that any affordable housing reflects the development itself. And so, for that to be the case here, it just means that there needs to be some, a lot of thought given to the facade of the building, especially as it faces Amundsen.
Yes, absolutely. We'll, we'll look at the whole vernacular, in the small area plans, some of those exhibits, and take a look at what we can make it, make it work.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Brendel, comments?
Thank you. Hi, Peter.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Our kids graduated together from me in high school, yes. It's nice to see you again.
Thank you, too.
Okay, so, from a sketch plan perspective, looking high level, is this a good use for this site? I think it is. It will be a game changer for this part of the city. It, it needs a new spiff and a new spin, and, and so, I'm excited to, to see something come in that gives us a vision for what this can be. So, how many parking spaces are there beneath the building? Fifty-eight. It's probably right in front of me. There it is. All right, fifty-eight. And then, we've got 45 surface stalls, including those that might be erased.
Correct.
So, what are the chances, I don't suppose you can fit any more parking underneath the building? Is that all secure parking, then, the 58?
Yes, you have to have the key to get in.
Okay, so that's, that's all secure parking, and so, I'm trying to figure out where we can put this, put the, the surface parking, the surface-level parking, in order that, so, I'm, I'm okay with parking on the street. If there's dedicated, let's say there's parking bays along Amundsen Avenue, if we can kind of, in, in any way, shrink the size of that, of that parking area. And so, so maybe some parking bays along Amundsen, that might get to creating some synergy between the street and the building. What might, now, from what we're looking at, it looks like a six-foot sidewalk along, or is, is that what it is?
Correct, six-foot sidewalk.
Six-foot sidewalk along Amundsen?
Correct.
And then-
And that, excuse me, Mary, but that sidewalk is actually in the street right-of-way. The heavy dashed line is the property line.
Ah, there you go.
So-
All right.
It's really tight for space in there.
Yeah, it is. So, I was thinking of, of, along there, putting some arbors and maybe benches along, along Amundsen, to see if that could create some, some streetscape along the building?
Yeah, we, you know, certainly, we haven't landscaped this, we just plopped in some, some tree images.
Yep.
In another community, we built in Newport, where you couldn't dig down too far, because it was all bedrock, where much of the garage was exposed, we actually put windows in there. The challenge of that was, you don't want clear glass, because you're looking into a parking garage.
Right.
So, it was, it was opaque glass, and we can look at doing something similar to, to get, put some more life into that space, as well as putting a lot more landscape in front of that. Putting, you know, putting benches or arbors is a great idea, and we'll probably, we'd probably do that anyway, it's, there's just not a lot of space.
No, it's not a lot of space, but maybe they can be narrow enough to soften that-
Yes, right.
-that interaction.
Yeah.
Going downhill toward the trail, so, I mean, this building really does fill the site. What, what are your plans for stormwater?
We have planned for underground vault storage.
Okay.
And, and we've, you know, we've got a lot of, plenty of space for that. One of the, one of the additional challenges of this site is the contaminated soils, and so, here, we're going to have, we'll be what they call a restricted site, and there'll be a limitation on the amount of abstraction. So, we basically have to hold more water longer before it gets released. So, we just have bigger tanks to build. But we have room for that, it'll all be underground storage.
All right. The small area plan talks about the, the vision of creating a park, and, and so, looking at, I suppose that would be on the other side of the trail. I don't know that that would be-
It'd be down in-
Specifically, yeah.
Down in here.
Okay.
Because the trail, you know, the trail starts high at Seventieth, and goes down fairly rapidly, and circles back around to get under the, under Seventieth.
Yep, yep.
So, it's, this is the area, right down in here, the, the bottom of the, that would be the park.
Oh, right.
It's also, Chad, I think it's pretty wet down there, isn't it? I mean, that was a wet lens at one point?
On the Athens, is it?
Yeah, on the, on the city site next to it.
It was, but also, the trail project needed to do some stormwater management, and they're doing that in the center of that, of the trail in there. So, that's part of their watershed permitting.
Got it.
All right, so, bike parking, that'll be in the ramp?
Yes, we have bike stor-, we have bike storage. I guess we haven't labeled it yet, but typically, we put bike storage in the corners.
Okay, all right. And then-
Oh, sorry, and there's some that's right here, too.
Oh, okay. All right. And looking at rooftops, let's see. So, roughly, what is the size of the building?
It's about 80,000 square feet on four levels above parking.
Okay, and what's the area of the roof?
Um, oh, Mary.
Is it like?
The, I was going to put up, we have a preliminary, this is all very preliminary, but-
Yep.
The fourth floor, and this is a point of interest. There we go. This is the fourth floor plan, and you can see, the fourth floor actually steps back a little bit on the south side, and a little bit on the north side. So, the fourth floor isn't quite as big as the third floor, and I think they're about, I don't know, 17, 18,000 square feet a floor.
Okay.
So, one possibility is, is to try to, maybe, if we could develop a roof terrace up there as an amenity space.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's a thought. This is probably too small to spend any time on, but this, this has some potential.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't looked at that yet, but-
All right, and then, any thought about on the, on the top roof, putting any, any solar collectors or anything like that?
No, we, we, we haven't studied that on this one yet. We, we have looked at that on some previous projects in the last couple of years, and the, the numbers just don't work out, and we're dealing, again, in the context of a program where, if you're not in the bottom 50% of applications in terms of total development cost per unit, you're likely not to get an award. So, we have to be very cautious every step along the way to keep the cost down, otherwise, we're not competitive, and then, there's no project, you know, no tax credits. But, you know, things change, so we will look at that again.
All right. So, you couldn't build it and then add solar later on?
I think it would be very difficult to do, but we've, there certainly are programs for retrofitting solar, and so, you know, we'll look at what would, what would it take to prepare for that properly, and is that a cost that the project can absorb and still be, fall within the cost containment guidelines?
Okay.
So, we're going to look at that, we're going to look at a lot of other programs too, we're going to take a look at electric car charging and some other things.
Good. All right, thank you.
Member Stott?
So, do you want to, okay. So, I'll echo a lot of the comments. I, I watched the Planning Commission meeting, I thought, I thought Commissioner Lee's comments were very on target. She, of course, was one of the co-chairs of the Seventieth and Cahill Project, and, so, you mean, the challenge you've got here is, you've got a, you know, a fully affordable housing project, but you also want to try and, it's going to be the first urban design piece of this new Seventieth and Cahill neighborhood, and we want to make sure we're getting off on the right foot. I'd echo Councilmember Fisher's comments about, about activating the street, the notion of something that feels like stoops, feels like direct entrances, those kinds of things would really, I think, help create more of a presence on the street kind of feel. I recognize you got some logistical challenges there, but I think that would really help activate the street. I'm ambivalent about the parking, front or back. I think, at the end of the day, I'd rather have it in the back, but I appreciate Councilmember Anderson's notion about, feels like you're giving up some great green space, although I think in the Planning Commission meeting, there was a discussion, you may have led it, about the elevation change that kind of creates, almost hides that parking, from the time you get about halfway down that slope, you're now below that parking, so.
That's right.
I liked the idea of pushing the parking to the north at the south end of the site, and maybe doing kind of what we did at Twin Cities Orthopedics, where we'd dedicate a 20-foot wide, or, or something like that, that subsequently could be matched up with a 20-foot wide on the other property, presuming that it redevelops, that starts to get you down with access to that bike trail along there. And, you know, it's just really looking at that Seventieth and Cahill character, and trying to figure out, how can we, you know, I think you'll find the city to be an enthusiastic partner in this, but figuring out, how can we create a, a, a structure with the right feel that starts that neighborhood off on the right foot? So, those are, those are my comments.
Thank you.
I'll go back to Member Fisher before I make my comments.
So, it just occurred to me, as this conversation's been going on, that I think Councilmember Brendel talked about parking on the street, and maybe we get, and that might be a missing piece here, the, the building is so close to the street, that, you're right, we can, I, I'm not sure you can even get a stoop, you know? I, I really believe sort of that townhouse or some kind of effect on the front of this building would be really helpful, and yet, I'm looking at this lot, and I'm thinking, well, wait a minute, who owns that lot behind you? Isn't it us?
Yes.
Well, yeah, the trail and then us.
I, I mean, I'm just wondering if we could be really creative here, and we can't do it here tonight, but if there were a way to, if the foundation worked out something with the city and, and part of this deal, and again, I'm looking at some pretty steep grades, so I don't know if it could work, but if there was a way to, to have a little flexibility, so the building could move back a little bit, we could figure out the parking, whatever that means, wherever that could be. At the end of the day, whatever happens here, if it can set us on a path that makes a great district, that should be our number-one goal. And right now, we've got, you know, a property line around this piece of property, but if indeed, we can help make that work better, it's good, and it helps elevate the district, then that would be a good use of public resources. So, I don't even know if that helps or makes more problems, I'm just throwing it out there. It's my job, it's my job, just to-
I get that.
You got Director Milner's attention. He snapped right to-
I noticed you just popped out of the chair almost, okay.
So-
He's awake now.
Yeah, we do own that parcel, but the Three Rivers Park District has a license to use it for their trail, so they had to build that to federal standards, that trail to meet ADA stuff. So, they have a license to use it, so I don't think we can just move that trail wherever we need to, to make any of these things. So, we just have to be aware, now there's a third party involved, if there's any changes over there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a radical person, but I'm not so much suggesting we change the trail as we, is there any, I mean, sometimes it could be, a few feet could make a difference here. I mean, in terms of what it feels like when you're walking down that sidewalk, it, you know, if it's five feet, that's better than what we have right now. And so, I'm just saying, make it as good as we can make it, and if we can help, we should be doing that.
Certainly, you know, maybe we have to look at some landscaping on, on the city property along the, along the trail, because it's, because right now, it's, it's not very attractive, and there's something that could be done to soften that edge.
Where's your rear lot line there, Mr. Worthington?
Right here.
Right on the, oh, there it is, that hash mark, that dark hash mark.
Yep.
Okay, all right, well, that's certainly something to think about. Member Fisher, anything else you wanted to add?
Well, it's just, you know, if we, if we just try to move what we're looking at right there, we probably don't gain much. But when you think about the combination of Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Brendel's comments about, you know, all of a sudden, I'm thinking, well, maybe there is a solution where some of the parking is in front, and, you know, making sure we're not over-parking the thing, and, and then, if you could, if you weren't so committed to the parking on the back, we could find a way to, to make enough parking work, and, then allow some flexibility. I mean, just imagine, if you didn't have to make that parking dimension work on the back, what you could actually do with the building? If we could incorporate sort of street-like parking on the front, still meeting kind of the, the necessary requirements, man, it would just change everything, you know, in terms of creating that, that sidewalk feel, and the, the right building feel, and then a nice transition down to the trail. And again, it's going to take some noodling, but if we, if we're not so bound to the exact property lines, maybe there's a chance, I don't know.
Yeah, good thought. There's actually, if you've been over on the trail, there's quite a bit of depth, more depth than it appears on the site plan, on the, on the side of that hill going down to the trail.
You mean, grade change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's a significant grade change, but the, the depth of it is fairly significant, too.
Oh, distance?
As you, I mean, it doesn't look, it looks fairly narrow back there, but it's not as narrow as it appears on the site plan, I don't think, when you're out there.
This is the survey. I guess I don't know.
So, you're, yeah, you see the trail up at the top there, I don't know what the, what the dimension is.
Yeah, this distance, oh, I just-
From your lot line to the-
Yeah.
Trail.
Well, if, if this is probably eight feet, I don't know, it's 12, 16 feet, maybe?
Maybe.
At the most, it's, it's pretty close in there.
But to Member Fisher's point, in this situation, a few, a few feet can make a But to Member Fisher's point, in this situation, a few feet can make a big difference.
Yes.
So, I just have a couple of supplemental comments, actually, maybe just one. And that is, there was that issue raised on the, you had the west elevation up there, and, you know, the street activation notion. And as the property goes downhill, the grade change is going south. Another building you might look at, I think, is over next to the Opus Office Building here in Grandview. The first building to the south, they've got a main-floor patio that's just a common patio, as I recall, that just stretches the length of maybe four or five units. And so, it's just a, it's a big, open patio, fairly wide, with a common railing, and they've just got common use of that space. So, that's something that could be...
Could look at that.
...contemplated as well, from the door going south for some of those ground-level units. That's about the only comment I had, other than the importance of this building to the site. So, architecture is really important to all of us, and so are the materials. And I know that this is the challenge in doing what you're being asked to do here, but our town, you live here, our town is going to be particular about materials and design. And I think it will be, it will serve you well as well, if you are to.
Message received.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. All right. Thanks, Mr. Worthington.
Thank you.
Next matter is board and commission appointments, and I think Manager Neal, you may have this matter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Each year, the City Council interviews a number of candidates for the city's advisory boards and commissions. This year, we had twenty-three applicants for really a very paltry four positions. We usually have much more than that, but by the way that our terms are cycling this year, in terms of vacancies on our commissions, we only had four vacancies to fill. And so, three of the council had a subcommittee of three members. Representative Anderson, Representative, excuse me, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Staunton, and Mayor Hovland interviewed the candidates on February 11th and 13th, and reached a consensus on the recommendation of four candidates for appointment by the City Council tonight. Peggy Martin to the Arts and Culture Commission, Jane Lonquist to the Heritage Preservation Commission, Dara Windmoyer to the Heritage Preservation Commission, and Ron Jones to the Human Rights and Relations Commission. If appointed by the council tonight, their terms would start on March 1st.
Good. Thank you. Comments from council members? Otherwise, entertain a motion to appoint Peggy Martin to Art and Culture Commission with a term ending March 1st, 2021, Jane Lonquist to the Heritage Preservation Commission with a term ending 3/1/22, Dara Windmoyer to the Heritage Preservation Commission with a term ending 3/1/22, and Ron Jones to the Human Rights and Relations Commission with a term ending 3/1/20. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
There a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A second. On that matter, on those appointments, any further discussion? All those in favor...
I just wanted to say thank you to the council members who participated in the interviews and everything. I was just unable to be there, and had full faith that you guys would pick the right people, though it's never easy, because we have so many good candidates.
Yeah, and it was no different this year, you know. Amazingly talented and generous people in our community. It was, I think, the only regret we had is we couldn't appoint all of them to something, so...
Good. All right. Any further comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried? And then, finally, in this part of the agenda, Resolution 2019-19, Accepting Donations, is there a motion to approve the acceptance of these proposed donations?
So moved.
Second.
The motion, second, to approve Resolution 2019-19. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried? Very significant grant, thank you, Members Brindle and Staunton, from the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, thirteen thousand to the Park and Rec Department, revenue from Fall Into the Arts Festival.
That Fall Into the Arts is a heck of an event.
Yeah.
It is, and there's a matching donation coming through. So, this is going, there's, basically, what happens is the net revenue of Fall Into the Arts, half of it stays in the Crime Fund Treasury, and half of it comes to the city. And so, it was fifty-two thousand was the net revenue. And so, thirty-two, thirteen thousand to Centennial Lakes Park, and there will be an additional thirteen thousand to the Arts Center.
Yeah. Terrific. What a great net number. All right. Well, thanks to both of you for serving as well. And then, Thomas Nims, for the Crater family, a generous donation of three hundred and fifty dollars for trees at Bremar Park. Move on to correspondence petitions. The agenda indicates we have nothing that's arrived. We had a few residents bring some things. Our clerk has accepted those items for the record in those respective matters. Aviation noise update, Member Brindle or Manager Neal?
You know what? There's nothing new. So, no.
No. We have, we've extended the invitation from the Noise Board for the trip to, when you're in Washington, DC, for National League of Cities, and that's getting onto your calendars. Not everyone from the council needs to be there, but some, we typically had good representation at that session while we're there.
All right. Very good. Mayor and council comments, start with Member Fisher.
All right. I'm gonna make this short. So, what does George Washington and Mayor Hovland have in common?
They have February birthdays.
Thank you. So, Friday. So, happy birthday, George Washington. Thank you. Oh, and Mayor Hovland. I have to admit, I'm just channeling a little Bob Stewart there. And if I'm being totally honest, he actually texted me.
That's funny.
Just to let me know that George Washington and Jim Hovland...
And that he knew George Washington.
Right. Exactly. So...
We knew George Washington's brother.
I just don't want to get anyone's expectations up that I would actually remember a birthday myself, okay? So, happy birthday.
Bob was in his brother's law school class in Virginia. Is that any relation to Fred Washington? Member Staunton?
Just wanted to note that we had a League of Minnesota Cities Board of Directors meeting today, and it was actually, tonight was part of their whole legislative day. It was an unfortunate weather day to have, invite city leaders from around the state to come down and talk to their legislators, but if they could get there, it was good. And it's, they're gonna have some events tomorrow as well, and so, lots of thoughts about legislation. I did, on the legislation front, have had some conversations, correspondence with Senator Franzen and Representatives Adelson and Elkins about the possibility of getting a bill through that would give us the discretion to set speed limits on side streets as we see fit, instead of required at thirty miles an hour. So, there may be hope yet. And thanks to Director Milner for his help on helping the Revisers' Office understand the limitations that are currently upon us. That's all I have.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. I have two. I received an, and I think we all received an email from a resident who said, "I'm not getting my mail." And so, I responded, and she wondered if the city had a relationship with the post office and that we could help out with why she's not getting her mail. And it happened to be that I was actually at the gas station the other day, and there was a postal carrier putting gas in his truck. And I said, I told him, I said, "I've gotten this letter, and I wanted to know which post office was hers." And I said, "So, why wouldn't a person get their mail?" And he said, "If she's in a walking district, and her sidewalk isn't shuffled, shoveled, she's not gonna get her mail." And so, I responded and said, "You have to provide access to your mailbox for the postal carrier to get there." But, so, I think that's a good reminder for everyone, that if you are in an area where the postal carrier walks from house to house with your mail, make a walkway for them so that they can get there. Otherwise, you'll probably be picking up your mail at the post office. And the other is, got a couple residents writing me notes, emails about the Edina Sun Current, and it's free or it doesn't look free. So, on February 7th, they had two ways to become a subscriber. One said, "Yes, I want to receive the Edina Sun Current in the mail for free every week." So, sign up for a free mailed subscription. And then, a page or two later, was a sign up for, "Join us to support local journalism." So, you have a twenty-five-dollar subscription, a fifty-dollar subscription, or a seventy-five-dollar subscription. And by becoming a voluntary subscriber, you help support community journalism. So, those were both in on February 7th. And then, on February 14th, it was just the one, the sign up with the twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five-dollar subscriptions. So, it's looking like the Sun Current is wanting people to pay in order to get the Sun Current. And that, for me, causes a conflict with it being our official newspaper. Do we require that the, I mean, the Star Tribune isn't free?
No.
So, I don't suppose, do we require that the newspaper is free for it to be our official newspaper?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, I do think if the Star, if the Sun Current is gonna be free, their message needs to be less confusing, because I'm sort of expecting this one that says "free every week" to disappear, and the other one to be the one that's in every issue. I'm sort of thinking ahead about, maybe that's what they're doing. But, anyway, it's important to us, because it's our official newspaper, to get, to get our news out there. And I think we're struggling to do that. So, those are my two things.
Good. Thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that Member Brindle brought up, two weeks ago, taking a care package or going over to Public Works. And those guys have just been doing it, and they'll continue to be doing it. So, anytime you want to go, let me know.
All right.
I'm in.
Great.
And then, the Edina Girls Hockey Team opens their defense of the state, their state title tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. That'll be televised. That would be a three-peat, if they do it again this year. That's pretty impressive, so...
Yeah. Certainly is. Great catch on that schedule for the Edina Girls Hockey Team. It's always great to have the chief here, but having Lieutenant Olson here tonight is really, it's a, it's a great thing. Thank you so much for being with us this evening. It's a great comfort having you sit over there and to see your smiling face. Good thing.
I think you saw all the land use items on the agenda tonight and volunteered to be on the dais tonight.
And then, the other items for me, quickly, go through. On the 6th of February, I spoke to the Jiro Club, which is basically retired business guys that meet over in Bloomington, a lot of them from Edina. And then, on the 9th of February, Edina Robotics had an open house over at the high school, stopped in there to see what they are working on this year. They'll have some meets coming up in March. Now, went in Duluth, and then over at Mariucci. And then, the Edina Chamber, I guess it won't be at Mariucci, it'll be at the barn. Edina Chamber had its annual fundraiser the night of the 9th, Saturday night as well. On the 15th, I attended on behalf of the Regional Council of Mayors, along with my co-chair, Molly Cummings from Hopkins, a meeting we were invited to by Minnesota Housing on unsheltered homelessness. And I'm thinking there were probably a hundred and fifty people in the room, and this, probably fifty of us around the inner table, and then all sorts of folks that were there. There's been a design team that's been working on how to address this issue of unsheltered homelessness. It seems to be something that's on the forefront of everybody's radar. Nobody wants to see people living in a tent along Hiawatha Avenue, especially in the middle of the winter or the summer. So, there's a lot of zeal with which this challenge is being addressed, and I think we'll figure it out here as a, as a community. And then, I had a walk with the mayor on Saturday. Many of you heard about some of the folks that were there, and we had some great conversations. And then, that evening was the Edina Chinese New Year Party over at Christ Presbyterian in the basement. So, they had a Saturday night service going on upstairs, and then they had the Chinese New Year downstairs, and it was a great group of folks, I think maybe three hundred, three hundred and fifty people there, including the members of our state legislative delegation. They were all there, Heather Adelson, Melissa Franzen, and Steve Elkins with their, I guess Steve had his spouse with him, and then Heather had her spouse and kids along. So, it was a, it was a really enjoyable evening. That's it for me. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few updates for you tonight. One is that we have the new formatted quality financial report, quality, it is quality, quarterly financial report that's included in the packet tonight. It's really a nice format. It looks nice. There is one errant cell in, that Councilmember Brindle brought to my attention, a negative four-point-eight million percent change in something, but that's a bad cell formula. We'll fix that. But, other than that, it's a very readable report, interesting, covers really, kind of gives you a good sense of the depth and breadth of our organization from an operational standpoint and a fiscal standpoint. Second, we have identified a potential date for a virtual town hall, May 20th. And I wanted to put that out to you right now, just as a tentative date. We'll do some more, we'll kind of confirm that with you calendar-wise, but, and talk a little bit more about what virtual town hall means. But, when we talked initially about our town hall procedures and protocol, there was some interest in doing a virtual town hall this year. That would be one night we could do it. Next, if you have any final input for our National League of Cities Federal Agenda document, we'd like to get that from you as soon as we could, so that we can finalize, finalize that document. The National League of Cities Spring Conference is coming up fairly soon. The closing date for our Parks and Rec Director opening is March 8th. So, we are accumulating candidates right now. Springstead Executive Recruiters is helping us recruit candidates for that position, and March 8th is the final date to apply for that. I gave each of you a packet tonight that has information related to my annual performance review. That is scheduled for the March 19th City Council Work Session, so that'll be, that'll be a closed session. I'm gonna make that request to you tonight. That's our protocol to do that. You are going to be contacted directly by Craig Waldron, who the facilitator of the review this year, to set up either a phone call or a direct visit, and he... would come out here to do that, to, to sit down and go over performance issues with you. Finally, another, just one final calendar item that I'm excited about, and that is the joint session between the council and the school board, Edina School Board, to take a look at the, the student demography work that Hazel Reinhardt has done for, for both of us, the joint study that she did. Some, some city staff got to see a preliminary version of this, of the work directly from Hazel a week ago, and it's, it's, it's amazing work, and it's, gives you some insights into what's happened, kind of in the, in the, in the past, with regards to student population in Edina, but really, more so what's happening in the future, and how important the decisions that you make as a city council are to, to the student population in the school district, so, that's all I've got for you tonight, thank you.
Well, I, I have a question, because, what was the date? March 19th, the work session formerly had Fred Richards' master plan.
Yeah, that's moved.
Okay, well, it's obviously moved.
Yep.
I just wanted to be sure it has a date.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know what the new date is, but it was, we shifted it.
Okay, great, thank you.
To think of one other thing that you and Member Staunton and I talked about, and that was a conversation I had with one of our residents about the benefits of having a conversation about density in the community that might occur over a, a period of time, maybe over a year's period of time, with periodic installments of that conversation with maybe some experts from the region or across the country that might lead some of those discussions, and, and help folks understand the various elements of, of density, so that's just something to put in the parking lot for now, but at least I'm remembering to bring it up. So, anything else from council members? All right, we stand adjourned, thank you.